Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. Please take your seats. Please take your seats and start to quiet down. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm advised by the town clerk that we have a quorum. And the second session of the 2019 annual town meeting, which was adjourned from May 20th until this evening, is called to order. I invite you to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and please be seated. As usual, we will begin tonight with a public service announcement. This, tonight, from town meeting member Melissa Hollenbach. Missy, would you like to come up front or stand there and get a mic?
Hi. The Rotary Club of Shrewsbury will host their fourth annual Food and Brew Fest at Avidia Bank on Sunday, June 23rd, from noon to 3:00 PM. The event is family-friendly and will feature food and beverage samples from area restaurants and breweries, live music, a kids' play area, and an extensive basket raffle. To purchase tickets, visit shrewsburyfoodandbrew.com, or you can get them at the Shrewsbury Farmers Market starting June 12th. And also, the money raised for this will be going to help St. Anne's Backpack Program. Thank you.
Thank you, Missy. I now call on town clerk Sandy Wright to swear in the newly-elected and re-elected town meeting members who were not sworn in on Monday evening.
Okay, would you please stand any newly-elected or re-elected town meeting members who did not get sworn in Monday? Okay, if you'd raise your hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially, into the best of my ability, perform the duties of town meeting member in accordance with the bylaws of the Town of Shrewsbury and the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you, Sandy, and again, welcome new town meeting members. Going back to Monday evening, I said on Monday that I was not aware of any town meeting members who had passed away since our last town meeting and asked for people to let me know if anyone has passed away since our last special town meeting in October. I was informed just this evening that we did lose a former town meeting member and a dedicated town servant. On May 10th, Vincent Messina passed away. Vinnie was a longtime town meeting member, longtime member and chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and also, for many years, a member of the Shrewsbury Planning Board. So those who knew him described him as not just a very nice guy, but someone who played it extremely straight in all of his roles and treated everyone fairly and exactly alike. So let's have a moment of silent meditation for Vincent Messina. Thank you. As we welcome new town meeting members, it's also time to say goodbye to several town meeting members who did not run for reelection or were not re-elected this year, or who are attending their final annual town meeting this week. I don't know who all of, everyone is who fits that description, but I do in particularly want to recognize one of Shrewsbury's finest, Bruce Card, who I have learned will be retiring as a town meeting member at the conclusion of this meeting. Bruce has served as a town meeting member for the past 37 years, and during that time also served as a selectman from 1993 to 2008. Bruce, on behalf of all of us, thank you for your dedicated service to our town. If anyone else here tonight is similarly retiring from town meeting service, you have our thanks for your participation and your representation of your precinct neighbors, and I hope you will find a way to remain involved in serving our town. Before we resume our consideration of the remaining warrant articles, please take a moment to make sure that your bright yellow sticker is prominently displayed on your person so that your vote will be counted if and when we take any standing votes tonight. I also want to remind everyone in attendance that if you are not a town meeting member, you must sit in the area behind the tellers. Tellers, please raise your hands, unless you have my specific permission to sit in front of the tellers. Now, let's turn to page 58 of the book and resume with Article 20 of the annual town meeting. There is a substituted motion under Article 20, which is the gold-colored paper in your packet of substituted motions. Okay, I've just been told it's not a substituted motion, but it is in the gold-colored paper in the booklet. This is a petition article sponsored by town meeting member Brian Moss. Mr. Moss, would you please move the printed motion under Article 20? Is there a second? Okay, the substituted motion under Article 20 has been moved and seconded, that the town adopt a town property pesticide reduction bylaw. Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee does not recommend Article 20.
Mr. Moss has requested 10 minutes to make a presentation on Article 20. Mr. Moss, please come forward.
There's gonna be a presentation up here, so I'll just wait till that comes on.
Okay, would you like the stage to be cleared?
It's up to that.
For a PowerPoint presentation? Anyone on the stage who would like to remove themselves to the front of the room? Please go ahead.
Okay, great. My name is Brian Moss, town meeting member, Precinct 8. Up here, I have what we're gonna go through tonight on Article 20, which is the Town Property Pesticide Reduction Bylaw. I'm gonna explain what would passing Article 20 mean, why is pesticide reduction important, who is endorsing Article 20, who is prioritizing organic over synthetic, what would it cost and what would it save? So first, if we pass this, it would adopt a pesticide reduction bylaw. It would be only for town property and not private property. That's very important. It's just for town property, not private property. Pesticides, the word pesticide is defined to include herbicides, pesticides, rodenticides, insecticides, fungicides. Focus on, what it's gonna do is first, it focuses on long-term prevention and suppression of pests. So what that means is instead of just spraying, we focus on the long-term, just ways to do that so you can do less. And what's great is through this process is I learned that the town has done fantastic in this area already. So they already have done a lot to do that. So then, after using those, that, those kind of process, it would state, secondly, to use pesticides only when other methods fail to provide adequate control of pests. So it's, your first thing is to try to take care of it the right way in the long term. Second thing is only use pesticides if you have to. And so again, the town's, from the meetings we've had, the town has stated that things that show that they are, they're doing a great job in this area too, where they're trying not to use a lot of pesticides. Thirdly, which is new, would be to prioritize organic pesticides over synthetic pesticides. And, and from the feedback from the meetings, I did the substitute motion because what I wanted to do is not just restrict them to say, "You've gotta use organic first," right, and then, you know, have them try organic and, you know, they don't really wanna use organic first, or they found from other towns it's not working. So what I did was I tried to do the substitute motion to give the flexibility so that it gives the director the flexibility to determine when synthetic pesticides should be used to adequately control the pest. So that way, you know, they're gonna be prioritizing it, the use of organic, but the director has the final say. So he can, he can say, "You know what, I've talked to other towns, this isn't working yet, it's not good enough yet, we're just gonna still use this synthetic pesticide." So I wanted to make sure that the director would have the ability to, the flexibility to do that. Then I also learned through the process that there's some concerns. There are some areas that, that, you know, just take, are gonna take more thought, more whatever. So I put those exceptions in, which would be for mosquito control. So this bylaw does not affect mosquito control, that can go along as it is. Laquin sigammon, management of invasive species, that can go along as it is. This is now an exception. Jordan and Dean Pond have had algae problems, so again, added that as an exception so they can use what they want in there. And I also added farming because we do have some land that farm, private farms use, and I didn't want that, I just added that in as a, I wanted to make sure I was mindful of that. And then, we would have a report annually on pesticide usage. So right now, the town's doing a great job, but it's not really out there. I didn't know that, we can't find that really that easily, and there's, I'll show you later how that's important, where we can actually look at what the town's doing, if they can report on that, so we can see how they're doing. And then another thing is the effective date. The effective date is actually January 1st, 2021. That would be a year and a half from now. So if we pass it tonight, they would have a year and a half to look at this, and to really flush out any problems. That should give plenty of time that if we pass this, the town could bring back any small changes that were needed, right? If we really wanted to do this organic-first pesticide policy and it was a glitch here or there, they have enough time to fix that. Oops, did I hit that by accident? Okay, why is pesticide reduction important? Pesticides harm health and contribute to disease. So a growing body of evidence in scientific literature shows that pesticide exposure can adversely affect endocrine neurological, immune, and respiratory systems in humans, pets, and wildlife, even at very low levels. Children are more vulnerable than adults, children are especially sensitive to pesticide exposure, children take in more pesticides relative to their size and weight, and chemical pesticides contaminate surface and groundwater. Who endorses the article? So Northeast Organic Farming Association endorses Article 20, which proposes an organic-first approach, the ideal gold standard strategy for reducing the use of toxic pesticides. This proposed bylaw would reduce the use of synthetic pesticides and herbicides, more generally termed biocides, destructive of life, and move Shrewsbury forward in its pesticide reduction goals. Massachusetts Sierra Club also endorses Article 20. We need to be cautious with pesticides because these new complex chemicals are difficult to study, as we have seen in the past, like DDT, chloridane. Many are restricted when harms are discovered following many years of usage. So it's usually down the road, 30 years, we find out, oh, we shouldn't have used that. Toxic Action Center, they also endorse the article, and they've been working across New England for 30 years on just toxic, reducing toxic in many ways, and one of them is pesticides. So who, who else is prioritizing organic? So in 2011, the city council of, the Town of Wellesley in Massachusetts banned all synthetic pesticides. Their Natural Resources Commission said, "The Town of Wellesley recognizes that it is best interest of public health to eliminate the use of toxic pesticides in Wellesley and to introduce natural, organic, cultural, and management practices to prevent and when necessary, address pest problems." And Town of Marblehead, they actually did this a long time ago, so in 2005, the Town of Marblehead adopted organic pest management regulations. And they describe it on their website, "Organic pest management is a problem-solving strategy that prioritizes a natural, organic approach to turf grass and landscape management without the use of toxic pesticides. It mandates the use of natural, organic, cultural practices that promote healthy soil and plant life as a preventative measure against the onset of turf and landscape pest problems." Also, most recently, people have been targeting certain pesticides, so that the city of Newport, just this year- of Newport, just this year, began phasing out the use of the herbicide glyphosate. And their Board of Health issued a proclamation recognizing the risks of synthetic pesticides and establishing April 2019 as Alternative to Pesticide Month. Falmouth, Falmouth, Massachusetts, in April, their Board of Health created a one-year moratorium prohibiting the use of the herbicide glyphosate, otherwise known as Roundup or Rodeo, on town-owned lands. It protects the town from liability in the future. We're asking towns to take glyphosate out of their toolbox and put back in organic materials, review institute-certified pesticides," which is just a technical way of saying organic. So when I'm saying organic, there are bodies out there that, that have standards on this, "which are cost-effective and on the same shelves as glyphosate products." One of the best examples, if you look at the United States, was two, was three years ago, in February 2016, when the city of Irvine, California, unanimous, their city council unanimously approved an organic pesticide policy, which uses organic pesticides and herbicides on all city-maintained landscaping, parks, athletic fields, and public buildings. They had 570 acres of community and neighborhood parks, all managed organically, athletic fields, 800 acres of public right-of-way, 70,000 trees, 1.5 million square feet of facilities, 6,000 acres of dedicated open space. Their vice mayor stated that the city demonstrated that you can have beautiful parks, playing fields, and open space that meet community expectations without the use of toxic pesticides at a very good price point. So what would it cost? Well, the town's doing a great job right now. They're already trying to reduce the amount of pesticides they use by doing that long-term approach. So they're probably, I don't have the exact details, they're probably using, you know, small amounts of pesticides, I don't have the details. But I wanted to talk about something that's been going on. These, you can see the people up here, but over the last year, there's been cases, three cases against Roundup to go to trial, and, and all of them have concluded that Monsanto's glyphosate, glyphosate-based herbicides can cause cancer, and that Monsanto is long-known about and covered up the risks. You can see there were jury awards unanimously for 389 million, 80 million, and most recently, after, you know, just before the town meeting, $2 billion law, award against Monsanto for a couple that, a married couple that had used their Roundup pesticide. So what would it save? Our pollinators, bees and butterflies, a lot of towns right now are trying to be pollinator-friendly. There's lots of ways to do that. You can designate yourself pollinator-friendly, you can, you can try to ban glyphosate. I try to make this kind of like a positive overall approach that's gonna make the town healthier, and it's gonna address the pollinator problem, the bee decline, the pollinator decline. We kinda take a stand and say, you know, let's, let's do this. Let's, let's save the pollinators, the bees and butterflies, and be the most pollinator-friendly community we can be. And just to wrap up, to conclude, Jane Goodall's quote, when California did it two years ago, "Pesticides are made to kill living things, and the idea that they only kill the things they're intended to is just wishful thinking. Time and science are revealing just how harmful these toxins can be to humans, animals, and the entire ecosystem. It's encouraging to know that there are people working to stop the use of pesticides in their communities. Non-toxic Irvine," which was the one in California, "the group of people is doing good work to make this change by engaging in a dialogue with its city's leaders. I hope people all over the world will, would be moved to take similar action." And I hope you do tonight. Please vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Okay, questions or comments with respect to Article 20? Mrs. Snell? Okay, there's gonna be some slides projected here too, folks, just when you got comfortable again.
Okay. Hi, I'm Angela Snell, I'm the Director of Public Facilities for the Town's Department of Public Works. I'd like to give you an overview of the town's current use of pesticides. As Mr. Moss has indicated, we are already reducing our use. On the screen is the amounts that we use for the last fiscal year. It's the limited amount of pesticides that have been used on town property in accordance with Massachusetts state laws and by licensed pesticide applicators. For the parks, there are 19 parks in the town of Shrewsbury. We have used zero gallons of Roundup in our town parks in the past three years. The things that we have used in the parks are six gallons of Tribune, which was used one time for the last fiscal year at Dean Park Pond. It was used to treat filamentous algae and help keep the weed growth down. We had five applications totaling 35 gallons of Captane XTR, which was used at Dean Park Pond. It's used to treat algae and prevent Sinobacteria blooms in the pond. If you're not familiar with Sinobacteria, it can cause stomach issues, vomiting, and rashes if you touch the water and have a cut on your hand. At Jordan Pond, the last year, we had, we did not apply anything because it was not needed. Our ponds are inspected by a biologist two times a month from April to September, and applications are applied by a certified pesticide applicator who is trained in water quality management. At Dean Park, we used two, we used a couple of cans of, sorry, hornet's nest that were in the playground fences, and the applications were done by a certified pesticide applicator. In the public building side, we have 971,556 square feet of buildings, that's all town buildings, schools, police and fire stations, library. A total of 2.75 gallons of Ranger Pro herbicide were used, one, a one-time application to treat wood lines near play areas, walkways, for poison ivy and weed control at several town properties. Since merging with the Parks Division and Public Facilities, this practice of treating poison ivy with herbicides has been discontinued. Small amounts of Abion ant gel were used for spot treatment in kitchens, and contained traps for rodents were used in kitchen areas and garages. No spraying is done. The school kitchens are inspected four times a year by a licensed applicator. Our contractor has indicated that the kitchen staff does a great job keeping these areas clean, so treatments are minimal. The use of organic products such as plant-based oils that contain mint green or winter green contain a strong scent and would need to be done when school is closed for a few days and repeated more frequently, as they are not effective and they're more expensive. Any product that we use at the school has to be approved by the State of Massachusetts in our IPM plan. For the highway, there's 160 center miles of public roads. Zero gallons of Roundup have been used by town staff in over 10 years. The town has implemented a roadside mowing program to reduce the weeds on the side of the roads. If the town were to use products, it would need to be in accordance with the state law 333 CMR, Section 11, which regulates the right-of-way vegetation spraying. But again, the town has not used pesticides in the past 10 years on the roadways. In the DPW, we have the following staff with certifications. We have two licensed pesticide applicator professionals in the Public Facilities Division, and one organic land care professional. In the Highway Division, we have one licensed pesticide applicator. I respectfully request that the town meeting allow the town to operate under the current state regulations that are currently in place to protect residents and allow the town to work with contractors who are familiar with the state regulations. I also remind town meeting members that these regulations will only affect a small percentage of the land in town, as many private landowners apply more pesticides than the town combined. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Snell. Just give a minute for folks on the stage to take their seats. Okay, any further questions or comments with respect to Article 20? Yes, ma'am, behind Mrs. Petrucci. Yep.
Sorry, I didn't want this. I guess, by, well, Christine Matero, precinct four. I think my biggest question is, is this really necessary, this bylaw? If the town's doing a great job already, you know, you've said repeatedly, the town's doing a great job at this, and then that you don't have all the details, and they're not using Roundup, how are we really reducing use? And is this bylaw really necessary?
Response, Mr. Moss?
That's a great question. So first, this is information that was publicly available to start, so this is a great job the town's been doing. We didn't, a lot of us maybe in this room, or myself, didn't know that they were doing such a great job, and that's a positive thing, that's a good thing. The reason we need it is because, that's not to say in the future, we don't, we won't have such great staff that are taking this upon themselves to make sure they're using these other alternatives, right? They've made decisions to not use these synthetic pesticides for a reason, right? And that's the staff making those decisions, well as, you know, they're coordinating with different pesticide applicators. But in the future, depending on what staff come in, they could use more. This would, this would allow town meeting to kinda set the policy. The director actually sets the rules and regulations so that they have control over how that gets done, so they could work with the organic certified applicators. We have one that does that, so in my mind, I think it's still valuable for the town to do, to prevent in the future.
Thank you. Mrs. Snell?
I'd just like to respond that now that all the different departments are under the Department of Public Works, if one of us were to leave, I would hope that the Department of Public Works is still gonna be following the same practices that we have been doing for the past three to 10 years.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Mr. Lukach? I'm sorry, Mrs. Matero, do you have a follow-up question? I'm sorry, I didn't see you making that gesture. Mr. Lukach, if you would, just wait a moment. Go ahead, Christine.
So again, it's under the discretion of the director. You know, the bylaw was written and now rewritten with a bunch of exceptions. My vote is in the vote of the people I've spoken with in my precinct, that it's not
Mr. Lukach?
John Lukach, precinct two. I came to, to this article after having read it, and I had a question and a comment, and the question has really been answered. Why do we need this article? I was gonna ask if anybody has gotten information from the town as to whether, what kind of pesticides we were using, and, and if we, if the town was already doing a good job, there was no need for this. And as the sponsor of, one of the sponsors of this article has already said, town is doing a great job on this area. So number one, this sounds to me like this is a solution in search of a problem, and I don't see why it should have even been brought up. But the other part of this, which was my comment, is going to be, this article has no enforcement provisions. So what, of what value is it? You're gonna have a director, I mean, if somebody were to go around and buy some Roundup and apply it, what's the penalty? How is, where's the enforcement of something like this? If you were going, if you really felt that strongly about this, there should be some kind of enforcement in the bylaw. Most of our bylaws do say, if you, if you violate it, there's some penalty. There's no penalties involved here, other than perhaps the supervisor, you know, admonishing the employee about going out and doing something they shouldn't have done. So I really think this is a, this article should be voted down as a waste of time. Thank you.
Response, Mr. Moss?
So we asked the question that there wouldn't be, is there any, like, kinda teeth to the bylaw, any penalties? And really, this is, you know, bringing what I hear a lot, we want a thoughtful approach, right? So I think, I think the town is doing a fantastic job, I'm pleased to hear that, this is great. I'd rather have this than have them say they're using thousands of gallons or something, right? They're doing a wonderful job, and I think we need to put that in writing for the future where it's a thoughtful approach, so that when they're doing this, they're sitting around the table where the director would be appointed, yeah, by, by the selectman to say, when we're doing this, we're gonna be prioritizing. So I would see that we would have the list of, list of pesticides, and they would probably be, we'd be reaching out to the people that do the standards, like the NOFA Mass and other things. But then they'd also reach out to other towns. What are you using on this problem? You know, Wellesley, Marblehead, what are you using on this? Do you have an organic substitute that works well? Yes, well, let's try to do that. So it's more of a thoughtful approach. In the end, it says the director can, this is kind of like a direction, and the director has the flexibility to set the rules and regulations where they could say, I mean, there's really nobody to define, right? They're gonna, the director's gonna be having this plan of organic management, so they're gonna be, there really is nobody to find in this. It's just, it's just, let's put this, let's codify this and make this something that town meeting sees that if, if you agree, that, that we put in there to, to set, set a better future for us and our kids. Thanks.
Further questions or comments? Mr. Vigon?
Steve Vigon, precinct two. As chairman of the Shrewsbury Board of Health, I wanted to inform the members that at a meeting that we held just prior to the Monday evening town meeting, the board voted two to one not to support Article 20. The two members who voted not to support mainly to give the town, the town department managers more flexibility, rather than putting it in the, in the form of a bylaw, we would like to have the town managers make informed decisions as to how to apply pesticides.
Further questions or comments? Mr., oh, Mr. Pitney?
Patrick Pitney, precinct five. Mr. Moss, you stated in your presentation that there were, I believe it was three different organizations that endorsed Article 20. Is this a case where you brought Article 20 to them, they reviewed it, and then endorsed the article? Or is it a gen, do they have a general approach to organic first? If you could clarify that, I'd appreciate it.
Response, Mr. Moss?
That's a great question. So those three organizations have, you work in these areas of toxic reduction, or Northeast Organic Farming Association does things as far as farming and, and producing, you know, our food, and so they're the organization, similar to the Mass Farm Bureau, in the, in state, and they're everywhere where they actually deal with how we, how we get organic food, right? And also, they're in conjunction with Connecticut, where how do we do organic land care? So they're the ones leading this, you know, in, in the states. The other ones, like Mass Sierra Club and Toxic Action Center, have campaigns to do, to reduce toxins, such as plastic bags, or styrofoam, or pesticides, or any other toxins in our environment. And so they have these specific campaigns, but I did reach out to them with Article 20 and discuss this with them, and they issued letters to endorse Article 20. So all three have specific, are, are letters of endorsement from their, from their representatives.
Thank you. Further questions or comments?
Bill Ghulie, precinct eight. I never like to miss a chance to support something John Lukach has said, so, thank you, John. I have a question and a comment. The question is for Director Snell. Is there currently a written policy that you have created, or someone has created, to move the department in the direction that you described? Because it seems to me that you are doing a fabulous job in achieving what Brian is trying to achieve.
Response, Mrs. Snell?
So I have to say that I have a, we have a fabulous staff in the DPW, so it's all of us, it's not just myself, it's the Highway Division Manager and the Parks Division Manager. We do meet often. We are also, one of our members, I'm sorry, our Parks Division Manager is a mem, has taken the certification through NOFA, so he is an organic land care professional. We do meet with other organizations about what products to use, so I mean, that's, that's the trend. The other thing is we do follow the Massachusetts IPM plan, so we do have a plan in place for what products you can use on school grounds, and then we follow that on the parks as well, and we've been doing that for years.
Thank you.
You have a follow-up, Mr. Ghulie?
Yes, if I might. I understand what Brian is trying to achieve here, which is to have something in writing to protect us in the future. It may be that this is not quite the right way to do that, but I'm wondering if it would be problematic for the- be problematic for the director to write some sort of policy that would carry over if you should ever retire, so that we could maybe be meeting Brian's, I think, major concern about having some sense that we know this is gonna be followed in the future, and not be tying your hands or the hands of the town manager. Would that be a reasonable request of you?
Response, Mrs. Snell?
I mean, we already have some policies in place, so to make a formal policy is not an issue. My issue is that if it's a bylaw, and then anytime there's a change, if there's a new pest that comes along, or something with mosquito control, that we have to come back to town meeting before we can solve it, that's where I have an issue.
Exactly. Thank you.
Further questions or comments relating to Article 20? Yes, ma'am, I can't see you, but I see your hand going like this.
Catherine Rajwani, Precinct Seven. I noticed in the substituted motion, there were changes, which I believe Brian had listened to, a lot of the committees and the concerns. So I think with regard to a new pest, I think the director has the ability to address that and not have to come back to town meeting. I think that's specifically in the substituted motion. Also, I don't, I don't understand why we wouldn't want to support this as a community, because it seems to me that we're already doing a lot of the things that are suggested here, and I think getting the information out to let people know that we're doing it would just be another feather in our cap. So I think that it would be helpful, and I think that before now, people really didn't know, you know, that we were substantially reducing pesticides. I know just recently, a few years back, when the artificial turf issue was before town meeting, so many people made comments about, oh, you know, the fields that we have, and the chemicals that are applied to them, they're so much worse than artificial turf. So obviously, there is a lot of misinformation out there about how our town lands are being treated, and it seems like if the presentation that was put together today for town meeting, I believe the Article 20 only talks about, you know, something simple like that every year. It doesn't seem like there would be a lot of oversight or changes to what we're already doing. So why don't we, you know, publicize that we are, you know, a community that is aware of these concerns, you know, we are, you know, environmentally friendly and global citizens, and try and promote that. It doesn't seem to me that there's a downside here, so I'm surprised that, you know, there's not more widespread support. Thank you.
Further questions and comments? Yes, sir, right in the middle, halfway back.
Jesse Shaw, Precinct Four. Hi, Brian, hi, Angela. I really appreciate the time and energy that Brian did put into this, I don't think it's a waste of time. It opened our eyes to see how good the town is doing. It allowed us to see the things that maybe we could do better, which is maybe having the Public Works Department kind of put something together in writing to help show all the improvements that we've made, but to classify it as a waste of time, I think is very harsh, and is not acceptable for the time and energy that Brian allowed us to open up our eyes to see that, one, this is needed, and, two, the town is doing a good job. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Ms. Hollenbach?
Lisa Hollaback, Precinct Nine. The town has always done a good job, anytime I've contacted the town, they've always been very quick to answer, even when I ask crazy things about getting goats to eat the poison ivy. But I think Mr. Moss's point of making this a bylaw, it does a little bit more than just making it a bylaw. It also says to the citizens and the residents of our town that we value these type of systems and programs, because as Ms. Snell mentioned, and I think Mr. Moss as well, that most homeowners are the ones that are really misusing pesticides and incest, and all the insecticide-type stuff, and herbicides. And they're the ones that really need to be educated, and this might be elevating that to a better, a higher level by saying, well, you know, the town takes this really seriously, maybe we should. Because these algae blooms and all these things that are going into the ponds are actually coming from our yards and our neighbors' yards. So this is kind of why, you know, I think we do, should support it, it's just something the town's doing anyway, let's just, you know, put a label on it, and maybe it will help all our other town people. Thank you.
Mrs. Snell?
Can I just say that the goats cost like $2,000 just to do municipal dry versus $200 for Roundup? Just saying. I will be asking for goats next year.
Further questions and comments on Article 20? Someone just had their hand up towards the front? Yes, ma'am. A hand waving.
Amanda Leister, Precinct Five. I see the value of this article as a way to gauge the strength of town sentiment regarding pesticide use. Does this matter to us? If this article is defeated, it suggests that this body doesn't care about pesticide use. If this article passes, it's clear that our town does care about reducing pesticide use. If we feel that pesticide use is harmful to the environment, or personal concerning to our health, and something like 13,000 lawsuits currently coming at Monsanto suggest that this is a concern, it seems much smarter to me to get this in writing. Once it's in writing, the town knows to use this for planning purposes. Also, as Ms. Hollaback just said, it raises the profile of this issue, so more people can learn. Thank you.
Further questions or comments on Article 20? Mrs. Deldato?
Deb Deldato, Precinct Seven. I like the use of the organic pesticides, if at all possible, and I'm really very pleased to know how our town is doing as far as minimal use of pesticides in general. Thank you.
Further questions and comments? Yes, ma'am, in front of Mrs. Deldato.
Danielle Wolfus, Precinct One. I have a question for Angela Snell. I'm just curious, what do you use on all the large grassy areas, like in front of the town hall or at the schools? Are there pesticides used there?
Mrs. Snell?
We don't use any pesticides on the fields or the town hall.
Further questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Vikram Chabra, Precinct Seven. I had a question for Ms. Snell. I couldn't really follow, what was it in the article that you think would basically make it a problem for you to take action in the future, if the need arises?
Response, Mrs. Snell?
I just think it doesn't need to be a bylaw, if we're already doing it, we can, if you want us to write a report every year, we're happy to do that. I just don't feel it needs to be a bylaw, because there could be some changes in the future that are needed, if there's a new pest that becomes present in our area that we might need to treat differently, so that's all.
Further question and comments? Mr. Malina?
Brian, thank you very much for actually bringing this to town meeting. Obviously, a lot of folks here are also interested in hearing what this report has to say, but, you know, in terms of the commentary that Mr. Lukach and probably others are thinking about the enforcement aspect of it, I wholeheartedly disagree about putting any kind of, or requiring any kind of enforcement to be considered. This is a bylaw intended to promote a policy, and I don't think the town would punish itself, so I don't really understand why we would look for an enforcement mechanism in this policy, and in this bylaw. So I don't understand the rationale about that one. Number two, related to just how it's written, I'm glad that Mr. Moss has put in here that this is a prioritization, the key word prioritization, for organic pesticides. So it, I don't see how that binds the town from having to use organics, but rather prioritize to use organics. And then to that point, we heard a lot tonight about how the town is already doing a lot of great work, and I applaud the reduction use, but of the chemicals that had been noted on screen, how many of them are actually organic? And do we have any opportunity to go organic? And I think that's the spirit of this bylaw, is really to say, put in a policy that we actually will go towards organic first, and if something props up that we can't be, solve organics, prioritize to the next thing that's best.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Miller?
Moira Miller, Precinct Ten. I guess I'd just like to make a point, I've been sitting here listening, we use the use organic, some people have spoken out against use of pesticides. I would like to, as many other people have done, applaud Mrs. Snell and Department of Public Works. I think they've demonstrated that they have this under control, that it's well thought out, that everything that's in this bylaw is already being done by the town. But the point I'd like to make, I think, is that what's being left out of this conversation is that organics, just because a product is organic, does not mean that it's not toxic. There are studies that have been done, I think one as recently as 2017, University of Illinois Extension. Basically, the study's showing that organic products vary, just like synthetic products, and there are organic products that can be toxic to humans. So I think we have to be really careful and really clear when we're talking about banning the use of pesticides, or prioritizing organics over others, that organics also in themselves have problems. And I think, again, that Mrs. Snell and the town has shown a very reasonable, responsible approach. I don't think there's a need for a bylaw.
Further questions or comments? Ms. Sokolowski?
Gail Sokolowski, Precinct Six. Some of the town meeting members seem concerned that the rest of the town, our citizens, need to be made aware of this issue. I think probably most of them don't read our town bylaws. Maybe direct mailings from some of those organizations to towns targeted to people might do a better job. I'm not in favor of this bylaw change.
Further questions and comments on Article 20? Mr. Sheikh?
Rashid Sheikh, Precinct Ten. I think there's a good effort by both parties, and Brian bringing the concern, and Director Snell doing a great job. There is, in my opinion, there's a difference between best practices and bylaws. So I really see this as a best practice, not really as a bylaw, because bylaw would restrict the town, and there's so many things town administrators do. Now, are we going to go and, you know, write bylaws on every single line item? I think it would be great to have a best practice, and maybe if there is not written best practice, maybe to write best practice. However, honestly, if we go that deep, then we are really restricting our administrators to basically have bylaws on many things. So, and the other thing is, I treat the town the same way I treat my own home. So how do I really make my own decision? We gotta ask ourselves, when we, you know, treat our own lands, how do we prioritize, and how do we do it? And if these folks are doing the same way, or better, then honestly, we just need to help support them, at the same time, you know, maybe encourage them to have more written best practices instead of bylaws, because bylaws do then tend to do more restrictions, because other things can happen, which we do not envision, and we only meet once a year or twice a year, so it would really make it difficult for administrators. So I really think that the best practice is the way to go, and if there is not, that would be the right way to do it. Thank you.
Further questions or comments on Article 20? Mrs. Petrucci?
Melanie Petrucci, Precinct One. I'd like to move the question.
Okay, a motion for the previous question has been made and seconded. This is a motion to end debate on Article 20. The motion is not debatable and must be voted on immediately. A vote in favor of the motion is a vote to end discussion of Article 20 and to proceed to an immediate vote on the motion under Article 20, on the substituted motion under Article 20. A no vote is a vote to continue the discussion of Article 20. This motion requires a majority, I'm sorry, this vote requires a two-thirds vote to pass. We're gonna proceed immediately to a vote, to end debate. Will all those in favor of the motion to end debate on Article 20 please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Will all those opposed to the motion to end debate on Article 20 please signify by saying no?
No.
And the motion passes by a two-thirds vote. We will now proceed to an immediate vote on the substituted motion under Article 20. This motion requires a majority vote to pass. Will all those in favor of the printed motion, of the substituted motion under Article 20 please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no?
No.
I'm uncertain, I'm gonna call for a standing vote. I'll ask the tellers to please prepare to record the standing vote. Okay, folks, would all those in favor of the substituted motion under Article 20, please stand and remain standing until I ask you to be seated. Please make sure you have your sticker on. Would all those who are opposed to the substituted motion under Article 20 please stand and remain standing until I ask you to be seated? Okay, you may be seated, thank you. Okay, the tellers have all reported in, and after a nationwide vote, the votes are as follows, 50 yes, 113 no, the motion is defeated. Article 21. This is also a petition article sponsored by Shrewsbury residents Shilpa Diachaki, Milland Canetkar, and others. Please refer to the substituted motion on blue paper in your supplemental packet of substituted motions. Is there a town meeting member who will move the substituted motion under Article Is there a town meeting member who will move the substituted motion under Article 21? Mr. Moss? Is there a second? Okay, the substituted motion under Article 21 has been moved and seconded that the town take certain steps to reduce the hexavalent chromium levels in the town's water supply. Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee would like to hear from the petitioners if they have a presentation on the substituted motion before reconsidering their vote.
Okay. Finance Committee recommendation is on hold. Mr. Kanitkar and his fellow petitioners have requested fifteen minutes to present in favor of Article 21. Mr. Kanitkar, please come to the lectern with your co-presenters, and please introduce yourselves before you begin your remarks.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Milin Kanitkar from Precinct 5, and I'm joined with my fellow team members who will be here helping during the Q and A. Their names are Rashmi Pitre from Precinct 1, Raj Arunachalam from Precinct 2, Shilpa Devchakya from Precinct 2, and Bindu Gupta from Precinct 1. We are here to share our concerns related to water quality of our town. Not related to the color of the water, but impurities or toxins that it carries along, specifically focused on hexavalent chromium. Hexavalent chromium is a carcinogen and has serious long-term health effects on your body with continuous exposure to either by drinking or inhaling it. I'm sure most of us have watched movie Erin Brockovich. That tells a lot about Hinkley, California, and effects of that hexavalent chromium on that town. Hexavalent chromium is found across all 50 states, and levels of contamination differ depending upon the terrain and the proximity to industrial sites. Hexavalent chromium is colorless and odorless. So if you are seeing discolored water at your house, it's not because of the hexavalent chromium. It's because of the most common issue that we have been known about is manganese and other impurities. Good thing is then, there are technologies that can remove the impurities or these toxins. So why are we here? We are here as a concerned resident to talk about high levels of hexavalent chromium in our water supply. And we are here to collaborate and expedite some of the work that is already being done and explore options together. In 2015, we were one of the three towns in Massachusetts to be flagged by EWG to have high levels of hexavalent chromium. We were observed at a level of 3.8 ppb, well above the levels found in neighboring towns' water supply. California Office of Health Hazard Assessment recommends after their study a .02 ppb level. Neighboring towns have different water supply sources, but as you can see, the hexavalent chromium levels are at minuscule levels than ours. Water supply for our town mostly comes from seven to eight different wells and get mixed up into our water treatment facilities. So regardless of what well is contaminated, we are all getting the same water and the quality of the water. Our town is working towards replacing two wells, and plan is to phase them out in next eighteen to twenty-four months. The identification of these wells, though, was primarily based on the factor of having high deposits of manganese to keep impurities away from our new water treatment plant and to extend the longevity of our new plant. Unfortunately, our new water treatment plant does not address hexavalent chromium issue. We found that two-- --high levels of hexavalent chromium. When inquired with the town, we were told that the work is being done, but as you can see, the numbers have remained high and have barely changed. Don't get me wrong, the work is really getting done. But as a resident and as a stakeholder, we are not seeing a change. For last four years, our levels have remained high and are in the range of 3.2 to 5.5 ppb. And few wells are having more than 10 ppb levels. Based on a scientific study, it is recommended to have .02 ppb level. But California set the limit as 10 ppb for logistical and political reasons. Because if they adopted that soon after the study, most of their water supply would have been out of compliance. EPA does not have a guidance. The number on their site, though, is for the total chromium and is not exclusively for hexavalent chromium. With that said, the discussions sometimes get lost into these numbers. But I would like to let you know that hexavalent chromium is carcinogenic, whether it is above 10 or below 10, or for that matter, .02 ppb level also. Because hexavalent chromium is carcinogenic. What we are focused on is to lower the level of contamination, to lower the risk of health effects on you, me, and our future generations. Here is how we compare with state average and top ten US cities and expert recommendations. If we have to set a goal to bring level of hexavalent chromium at any of these levels marked as green, that will be a huge win for our town. By this scale, we are around 168 steps away from our goal. Health hazards of hexavalent chromium are known and well-presented, as I mentioned, by Hollywood movie Erin Brockovich. But various toxicology studies have proven this too. The major hazards like stomach cancer, developmental harm, liver damage have been established. As explained earlier, this can happen by inhaling or ingesting water that is contaminated by hexavalent chromium. We spoke with lady who headed this study group that advised California Health Assessment Board. Her name is Elaine Khan. And we inquired specifically about what are the effects on health of our town at the levels of 3.5 ppb, which is what our water is at this point in time. And the level of risk was stated as one in 5,714 people, to be specific, or to be exact number. So if we have to extrapolate that to the population of our town, we are talking about at least seven families getting affected by that in their lifetime. Serious health effects like cancer have led some residents to seek alternative mitigation methods. The simple filters like Brita Pure doesn't work at all. Some of the residents are using reverse osmosis. It does work, but it's expensive, and not everybody can afford that. We did a survey on a sample size of population within our town and supporters. And what we found is 66% of those individuals who responded to our survey didn't even know what kind of filter works for hexavalent chromium. I would like to also state that residents who have installed reverse osmosis, these kind of filters are not available on public properties like schools, libraries, or senior centers. So imagine you might have a reverse osmosis at your house, but when your kid goes to school, he or she is going to drink the water from the bubbler and not from the water filter that you have at your home. If you are eating outside, guess what restaurants are using, what kind of water? You guessed that right. It's the same water that you and me are drinking every day. Secondly, reverse osmosis generates two-thirds of wastewater, meaning for every one gallon of clean water, we are wasting two to three gallons of water as a waste. So we are unknowingly creating more wastewater. And for a growing town like ours, when we have restrictions during summertime to not water our lands, this is a waste of water. These are waste of natural resources. Hence, we are here to look for scalable solution for the whole town rather than a single dwelling. With that said, we would like to acknowledge what our town has done so far. Our town has been working on knowing the technology and collect the knowledge around the technology by speaking or interacting with some companies and agencies that work in this space. We suggest that they work with agencies like WQA to find more about other solutions. Town has been working with DEP by drilling test wells, test wells, to find the source of the plume. We would like them to continue to do that work. But replacement of wells takes time. So we need to continue testing to find solutions that works for us. We cannot rely on the hope that new wells may bring down the levels of hexavalent chromium. Based on the meetings that we had with the water department, town is hopeful that hexavalent chromium levels will come down after retirement of two planned wells replacement. The estimated levels could be between 1 to 2 ppb. So for this demonstration, we have taken an average of those two numbers. As you can see, the levels will still be higher than surrounding towns or top ten cities in the United States, even after retiring two wells. Based on these and the discussions that we had during various meetings along this process, we considered three options originally. Retirement of off-ending wells, all three of them and not just two as planned. Continue biological testing to find alternative technologies that work for us. And the third one was using the other water sources. And that third option was selected based on the 2016 study that was done by town to come up with alternative sources. But as we know now, along the process, option one takes a lot of time, and we don't have supplemental water supply in place. We know now is not feasible based on the comments that we received from town. So we are left with option two, and that's what we are asking for. We are asking to continue testing for biological filtration system. And as our experience was along with this process, we were surprised in a lot of ways. And along the way, just like during the previous article, you know, there is very, very less information on the web. You have to always inquire, and don't get me wrong, our town has been super, super nice. They always answer our calls regardless of whether they are for or against. So I am thankful for that. But, you know, it's good to have all this information on web. It's good to have more traceability. It's good to have, as a stakeholder, to know all these things, what's going on within our town water supply. And the third one we would like to ask is set a plan to work towards the goal to get hexavalent chromium levels at or below state average. Thank you for the opportunity to present substituted Article 21, and we hope to have your support to move this forward.
Thank you. Questions or comments with respect to Article 21? Mr. Tuzeski. Water and Sewer Superintendent Bob Tuzeski.
Just let everyone get up on the stage for a moment there. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, town meeting members, for allowing me to speak before tonight. Hexavalent chromium is an issue that the town has put an awful lot of time and effort with. And I appreciate the petitioners bringing this forward because the community is obviously involved with us, and the town has been very proactive on this. And we want to certainly work together and inform the community on these matters over there. You heard a lot of terms being brought up tonight. You heard Hinkley, California being brought up and discussed. I can go into these a little bit more in detail so people understand these a little bit better. Hexavalent chromium is tested here in Massachusetts as part of total chromium, which is trivalent chromium or chromium III, and hexavalent chromium or chromium VI. And the level for all states other than California is 100 parts per billion. Town of Shrewsbury is at 3.5. We're certainly below that standard. California has had standard of 50 for total chromium, and we are below that. In 2011, excuse me, in 2011, 2012, they brought forth an effort to get to 10 parts per billion of hexavalent chromium, making California the only state that have a level for hexavalent chromium. That was going to be in effect for the year 2020 for all suppliers in California, which is 8,300 water suppliers in California. Forty-three percent of those are above 1 for hexavalent chromium, and 15% of that is above 10. So they have about 500 to 550 systems that are above 10 parts per billion in California at this present time. The motion got struck down in the California Supreme Court, some of it by some lobbyists for some industries, and some of it by water suppliers also, just for the feasibility of trying to get to that 10 number. A study went out based on the Hinkley, California matters that there was a gas pipeline that transmits natural gas from Texas to California. In the 50s, 60s, and into the 70s, natural gas has to be recompressed every 350 miles. There was a compression station outside of Hinkley, California, and they use hexavalent chromium as a coolant and a rust preventer in the compressor stations. It was dumped in online beds, and over 300 million gallons went into the aquifer in Hinkley, California. The averaging in Hinkley was about 530 to 580 parts per billion on the private wells. Hinkley, if you're not aware, is at the edge of the Mojave Desert. It's outside of Boston, a desert community, private well, not a municipal water system there. It got contaminated into private wells and resulted in a $330 million civil case against Pacific Gas Electric in which they had to pay damages. That work is still being done today in Hinkley. I have been in contact with folks working on the Hinkley Plume. It is presently six miles long, two miles wide, and it's going deeper into the aquifer. They have been working on this continuously. Very difficult matter to work on. Hexavalent chromium is 7.2 for specific gravity. It means it's 7.2 times heavier than water, sinks into the aquifer. That's why water suppliers have somewhat of a difficult time trying to treat that. Very mobile, not an easy fix on that there. So due to the Hinkley, California, California EPA along with their congressional delegation nominated a study to be done at Department of Health and Human Services in 2000 and 2001. Finally, the study was completed in 2008, and this is this national toxicology study, a report that you always hear that comes up with this goal, public health goal, which is not a standard anywhere in the United States, of 0.02 parts per billion. That's mentioned a lot-- That's mentioned a lot there. Again, that is just a standard. It is not, uh, excuse me, that's just a recommendation for a health goal and it's not a standard anywhere in the United States over there. When they looked at this, that's when California came up to this 10 after looking at this 0.02. 10 was a reasonable amount and again, that got cut out in the California Supreme Court. So what has the Town done? The Town's been very proactive on this matter. One is that we contacted the butters on that because our first thing is to try to find the source, obviously, and find out what wells are, uh, have the hexavalent chromium into it down there. So we have contacted Metso, all the neighboring businesses and got DEP involved. Appears to us, not definitively, that the main source is up in the Plantation Street area. Wells up there pick up 1650 to 1700 pots per billion up in the Plantation Street area. Comes diagonal to our well sources, but a small finger comes over to the edge of our field over there, which we monitor. And we end up with three wells picking up somewhere between four to 20, varying on what we're running for right now, and ends up at about three to three and a half. We have really minimized or shut off one of the three wells and we try to minimize the best we can. We have also Town Meeting, I think it was two years ago, authorized funding for a new well at Soul Street in which we just completed a five-day test yesterday on that there. So we're trying to get away from the property, one, over there and trying to replace some of that 1 million, it's 1 million gallons is what we're talking about that we have to replace, uh, over there. Two is we have drilled another well on the Home Farm property further away, but we can't get off the property or more over to the western edge because we'll be on the Metso property, including into the building. We have to have what's known as a 400-foot radius around the well owner control. So we're limited in what we can do there. The third thing is that we also tested and contacted water suppliers throughout Southern California and had some in-depth conversations with them. Out in California, because of they were going to the standard of 10, they were under the gun to try to come up with treatment technologies. Out there, they use mainly ion exchange by far, uh, strong base by far is the most prevalent. But even the people that are using that are getting it only down to about two to three pots per billion to try to get it down. In California, most of the hexavalent chromium is natural. It's not from industrial sources. It comes from rock formations, the Hoquachilla Valley, Palm Desert, Rancho Mirage, that whole area there, their average water is 20 to 30 on a daily basis for pots per billion. And it's been like that for a long, long time. And you have to remember, places like that have 20 to 30 individual wells. You have to treat every well. We have centralized treating at least, but most water suppliers have individual wells who make it more difficult to do the treatment there. So the Town has again done this. We've come up with some technology of a biological source that was being used in the Central Valley of California mainly for nitrate removal. But then it was also discovered that it was removing hexavalent chromium. Suppliers in California alerted us to that. We have contacted those folks. It was designed by Corolla Engineers out of Walnut Creek, California, have done it. It was just pilot tested 2016, I believe, and 17 in Norman, Oklahoma, where their average there was 70 to 80, uh, coming, uh, pots per billion per day over there. They did a 10-month test and they basically had after four months escalation down to zero there. So after Norman, we used that same system here in Shrewsbury for a short period of time. But because of the new plant coming on and because of, uh, the monitoring wells not be able to hold enough water, enough hexchrome there, we had to cut that short. The problems that we saw was if you're trying to use a ion exchange type of method, you're going to have 250 gallons for every million gallons you pump wasted for hexavalent chromium. We tried to look at a new technology, which is a weak base, uh, being used and developed at the University of California Davis, used up in Northern California. We have still 25 gallons out of every 1 million, but you still have to bring in a lot of salt for the brine and for the exchange. So we found problems with both. That's why we were trying on the biological. One of the problems with biological, it's never been tested here in Massachusetts or the Northeast. So we had applied the DEP for what's known as innovation, innovative technology so it could be used anywhere in the state there, which we did apply for, uh, over there. And it's going to take some time. Like these folks said, they're, they're concerned, a- as are we obviously, but we work in a regulatory network. We have to work on the DEP guidance. And if you just look at this study that we talked about, toxicological study, it was submitted in 2001 and took the 2008 for the federal government to come up with the study upon that. And the same with the wells, it takes about 18 to 24 months to get approval from DEP and to get a new source online. So we have to work within the regulatory network and we have different constraints that we have that we just can't put putting wells in and shutting wells off over there. The other thing that I worry about just personally is if we do shut off the three wells, does that plume migrate further down to our other wells on the property? It's something that no one has been able to tell me yes or no on the hydrology there. So it's always a concern over there. So we're not opposed to doing more treatment, certainly the Town is over there, and we'd be able, able to entertain other maybe options also on that. But our goal is to get as close to zero as possible in a short amount of time. So we are together with these folks here. It's just that with the regulatory climate and other, uh, obstacles that we're up against that we just can't do it overnight. But I mean, our goal is again to minimize it and get it down as close to zero as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Further questions or comments with respect to Article 21? Mr. Pitney, is the Finance Committee prepared to give its recommendation? Need some more time? Yes, folks? Yes, sir. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Jesse Shaw, Precinct Four. Um, I have two questions. First, I just want clarification on this by law because while it was a great presentation, I'm just confused on what you're asking the Town to do. My understanding is to continue its biological testing and to just publish kind of a plan of where the Town is and to inform regularly the Town residents what to do. You're not dictating what the Water Department should do, but they should be more letting us know, the Town's people know what is actually going on. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Yeah, so that is correct, but we were told when we met with the Town Department that the biological filtration plant is not, I, I don't think they have budgeted or have funds for continuing the testing for it this year. So what we are asking for is that that be continued in addition to, basically, we want some kind of a concrete plan to, because it's been four years and the levels are pretty much the same. So we just want it to be a concrete plan and we wanted, we want some budget or funds assigned so that the biological filtration plant, uh, testing can continue.
Go ahead, Mr. Shaw.
So this law, by law, is just looking for more transparency with the Water Department?
Uh, yeah, I think the biological filtration plant testing was not going to be continued this year, so we are asking that it be continued and then also, you know, more transparency and also some deadlines be established so this actually, you know, gets some action. I know that the Town has been doing a great job, but there has been no deadline or no recognition of the problem in, as, as has been the case for manganese. So we're just asking that it be elevated and there be a deadline set and also that the filtration plan be, uh, you know, filtration system be continued, uh, the testing of that be continued.
Great, thank you.
Further questions or?
Just a follow-up statement.
I'm sorry?
Just a follow-up statement.
Okay.
Um, two things. Uh, I know that when I mention what town I'm from and I say Shrewsbury, 50% of the time it's, oh, you have horrible water. It becomes a water joke. That being said, this is what really upsets me about, um, what was done. While my wife was pregnant and nursing our child, um, in 2017, we consumed our eight glasses of water a day, didn't realize it was contaminated, and we did not know about this until our child was 15 months old. Because the Water Department incorrectly handled that situation by not noticing its citizens, they have lost my trust and I know many others in Town. And I support this by law and I am getting tired of buying Poland Spring every week at the store and I would like to drink my own water. Thank you.
I understand the Finance Committee is ready to announce its recommendation. Mr. Pitney?
Mr. Moderator, by a six to three vote, the Finance Committee does not recommend Article 21.
Thank you. Further questions or comments with respect to Article 20? Mr. Vigent?
Steve Vigent, Precinct Two. I just wanted to let the members know that at a May 3 meeting of the Board of Health, there was a unanimous vote not to support Article 21. I should say though, that we voted on the article as originally proposed and we did not have the opportunity to vote on the article as amended.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Mr. Scott?
Steve Scott, Precinct Nine. To Mr. Tuzeski through you, Mr. Moderator?
Sure.
Um, I'm encouraged to hear there's a plan of attack, all right, to, to solve this problem. But could we step back to the origins of this? You mentioned Metso and a plume. Is this the result of their putting things in the ground or dumping waste and are they, do they have liability in this?
Uh, good question. Thank you very much. Here in Massachusetts, there's really no natural hexavalent chromium, so it's industrial discharges over there. If you kind of remember, uh, the original plant was built back in 88, 89 because of VOCs, trichloroethylene coming off of the Metso facility and some of the other ones in that general area resulted in a $6 million lawsuit, which the Town won against those industries. Here, we started with the adjacent property, working with DEP and notifying them that, yes, we have a problem on our property, what are you going to do about it? So they identified that they're not the source that's coming upgrading from them. So DEP has put some wells at their own expense along Bodice Drive and Plantation Street because the Town does not have the authority to go into Worcester. We don't have the authority to go on private property in Worcester, the DEP can. So they have been working with these owners, uh, under their hazardous, uh, waste division over there, having them get licensed site professionals, uh, going on there and, and their liability will becoming what happens on this investigation. You know, again, as Town Meeting members, we, and Water Department too, we're, we're partners to this whole thing down there. We didn't cause the problem. Uh, we're trying to identify and deal with it down there and it, and it's a difficult problem to deal with over there. So we're doing one step at a time, trying to identify it, working through the state to take whatever action is necessary to get remediation, either treating it off-site or in situ or getting damages at some point in the time. But in the immediate time, this is a long-term problem. For the public, we have to come up with some, either relocation of wells or some type of treatment process, uh, either now in the near future, that even though we're below, I mean, there's, right now, I probably should say, there, there is no requirement for us to sample anything hexavalent chromium. There is no requirement for any, and anything for the Town to do anything, but the Town has dismissed that. We've taken the proactive approaches. Yes, we're going to sample. Yes, we're going to take the aggressive approach with the businesses. Yes, we're going to look for our own technology, what we are. So we went really kind of beyond DEP. Town took the first step forward because of the citizens and because of the young children that that gentleman mentions like that. That, that's what we have to do over there. We did, we don't have to notify anyone, but we decided that we're going to take aggressive action on this.
Further questions or comments?
Good evening, Mary Icardi, Precinct Five. Could you clarify a fact? Has the testing been discontinued or not? Or is there a plan to do testing? Because that seems to be two different stories.
Mr. Tuzeski?
We tested different points of time. DEP doesn't have us on any regular schedule, but we just test ourselves at different points of time just for operational purposes over there. We have sampling plans we could do monthly, quarterly. On these samples here, there is no Massachusetts lab that can get the results down as low as we have to. So we have to send them out. Right now, South Bend, Indiana, they have testing done. We had sent them out originally to Monrovia, California over there to have them done. So we just do it ourselves on somewhere of a quarterly basis ourselves to see where we are operational because, uh, because right now we, our flows, as long as they stay the same, should be somewhat consistent. And then as stuff changes, we will sample again.
Follow-up, Mrs. Icardi? Whoa, whoa, hold.
So are you planning to test in the future?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So these people are saying you have discontinued testing?
No, no, no. No, yeah, we, we're going to do it, but I'm just saying, I just don't have, like, I'm going to be doing every week or every month, but yes, we will be doing it.
Within six months, will there be a test?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Folks, folks, back and forth, back and forth, not allowed. Okay? Let's ask someone else for questions or comments on Article 21. Yes, ma'am. Can't see your face, but next to Mr. Molina.
Jennifer Luke, Precinct Three. Um, I have to applaud you on your presentation. I am one of those people that has a whole house filter and in addition has a reverse osmosis filter for my drinking water because I'm very concerned about the chromium six. You know, the EPA states 100 parts per billion, but really the EPA has often promoted things that are at dangerous levels that you then find out much later on that they've said something was safe and you find out that it's not. So I really do not trust the EPA in stating that 100 parts per billion, you know, would be a, a level that was adequate for chromium six. And, you know, I have two young children. I don't want them to ingest any, any of chromium six at all. It's obviously shown to cause cancer and I, and I don't feel, I, I really feel like we should support this article and make sure that the Water Department is held accountable for making sure that this is out of our drinking water. We spend a lot of money, you know, on our water and I have to spend extra on replacing my filters and all the things just to keep my family healthy. So I am in support of this article.
Response, Mr. Tuzeski?
Thank you. You do bring up a valid point. The 100 pots per billion that we talked about was established in 1991 and it was established mainly because it was known at that time, air inhalation mainly from welding could cause lung cancer. And it was the second part of that is that because total chromium is probably more important than hexavalent chromium is because chromium in your body is necessary for glucose regulation. But trivalent and hexavalent can switch back and forth in the body as it's being used. So you always want to know what the total is rather than just the hex on there. But that lady is correct there. Uh, that's when testing was done, 2013 to 2015 nationwide, all water systems over 10,000 to see what hexavalent chromium levels were out in the country. And that's why they are trying to establish some. I mean, I, I think 100 is too high myself, whether 10 or 0.02 is the right one, but that will time will determine on that.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
So before this question, I just wanted to address the question raised by the Town member before this. So the levels that we are talking about, the testing are two different things. Uh, Mr. Tuzeski here was talking about testing the levels of hexavalent chromium and that's still going on. We are talking about continuing testing of the biological filtration system, which is supposed to be addressing this and can be a potential solution for this problem. That is what has been discontinued and does not have a budget. They, they do continue to sample the water, but we are talking about a different thing. And to address the EPA limit, yes, EPA has a limit of 100 and California had a limit of 10. All these limits are really based on economic and political, I guess, constraints. The real limits are coming from the scientific community and those are at really low levels. So the California Office of Health Hazard Assessment, they came up with a limit of .02. These are scientists who have done work for years. They have, if you look at their toxicology report, I mean, the report that gave, came up with the .02, they have about 100 different studies cited in that. And all of these, their recommendations are based on extrapolations of those studies to humans. So I think we should really be going by those numbers. Agreed that it's hard to actually set goals that are that low, but in general, the goals are supposed to be set close to the health recommendations. In this case, the goals are, even the California lowest level goal was about 500 times the recommended level. So just to keep in mind, that's where the numbers are coming from. Thank you.
Mr. Mizikar?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Wanted to take an opportunity to just go back to a couple of things Mr. Tuzeski had said earlier. So we were originally piloting a biological filtration process that the DEP allowed us to do when we had the old water treatment plant standing. Um, and we ran into a situation where the monitoring wells that we were using to source the water for that biological filtration process actually did not contain enough, enough hexavalent chromium to continue the piloting process to, to be able to show scientifically that the piloting process was effective. that the piloting process was effective, to be able to reduce hexchrome if we were to bring it into the entire filtration process. Since that time, when we had to shut it down, we now have raised the old water treatment plant and constructed the new one. We began focusing on the replacement of wells as we know that the replacement of wells from the testing and studies that we have done will reduce the level of hexavalent chromium in the water in and of itself with, with bringing these replacement wells online. We anticipate that that will bring the hexchrome levels down from three and a half to between one and two parts per billion. We want it at zero. We're going to work to get it to zero. We do actually still have funding that this body approved to pilot test. We have to go back to, to the DEP, and, and we have to get their permission. What's different in the new pilot testing process that we will do is it would actually have to go into the water that we're bringing into the treatment plant that would ultimately be filtered out to everyone. So it's a highly regulatory process in order to introduce a new technology and pilot it at our water treatment plant. So as Mr. Todeski said, we're focused on this. His level of knowledge of this is probably the best on the East Coast. It, it, you know, and, and we're doing everything that we can to move as fast as we can in a highly regulated environment. Something as simple as bringing a well online takes 18 to 24 months because it's very important to get it right the first time. That's what we're focused on, and that's what we're committed to doing.
Further questions and, or comments on Article 21? Dr. McGee.
Thank you. Dale McGee, Precinct 5. Just a clarification.
Dale, could you just start over again? Your mic wasn't on while you were introducing yourself.
Dale McGee, Precinct 5. Just for clarification, we're hearing this 3.5 number, and I'm unclear as to whether that's hexavalent chromium or it's total chromium, because I believe I heard Mr. Todeski say that it was total chromium. If that is true, then what is the hexavalent chromium level here in Shrewsbury right now?
Mr. Todeski.
Yes, Mr. McGee. It's, 3.5 is hexavalent chromium. All the chromium that we have here in town is hexavalent. As we went through the total and tested, we picked up nothing on trivalent chromium. So that's 100% hexavalent.
Further questions or comments on Article 21? A gentleman right behind, Mr. Sheik.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. John Menlinski, Precinct 10. I really do appreciate the petitioners today. These are regular residents in town. They're not town meeting members, and they really took a lot of their time to bring this to town meeting. So I really do value coming to town meeting today. I have to support this because it's, it has three main reasons. The first one is more testing. And the second reason that I'm really supporting this is because they want to inform the whole town. Today was the first time I saw a lot of this information from the petitioners, and I became a little bit more educated. I went to my precinct with this article. I went to a couple of my friends at university that study the sciences, and they educated me on this. But I think the main thing is the residents of Shrewsbury really do need to know what's going on with the water. They do need more testing because it's going, it's going to show more, it's going to really build confidence in the water supply. I use pull and spring. My family does. All my friends, the people that I talk to use pull and springs or any form of bottled water. We need to bring the trust back to Shrewsbury Water, and I believe this is a step in the right direction. I appreciate that, and I'm voting to support you guys. Thank you so much for coming.
Further questions or comments on Article 21? Mr. Moss.
Brian Moss, Precinct 8. Just a couple of things. One is, I know that the Calif, California limit of 10 parts per billion is a political number, right? I know scientifically, it's .02 parts per billion. And we know our Water Department does a great job on, they did a great job on manganese. They do a great job on hexchrome. They're doing everything they can. They're very knowledgeable about it. We know that regulatory, the regulations, this is below, you know, why are we working on this? It's below the, we don't even have a number, and if it was, this is below even what California has, so why worry about it? We have worried about it. I mean, the town has worried about it and done that. So I'm appreciative of the town putting so much work and the residents, because, you know, this is one of those things where things don't go away, right? This is some, this is another example of toxins that we're going to have to face. Who knows? Hexavalent chromium for a long time. So I think it, I think it's a good idea to do what we did for manganese where, for manganese, there was a, a page that, that, that the town put up. So if I search, it'll say information on manganese, and it has all the information kind of bundled under there. I think that would did it a nice job on that. If I search for hexavalent chromium, I think there's a lot of great information that town has put out, like different things, like, this is a summary. This is where we're at now. I'd love to see a page, like, we have, I think we have a marijuana page and a manganese page. It'd be great to have a hexchrome page that we can, that we can direct residents to with all this information. A lot of times, people look at manganese is brown, right? Manganese in your water is brown. So I, I think a lot of the population knew it was in the water. They've been really pushing for this. Hexavalent chromium, you don't know what's in there. So I think, I think a little, I, I like this petition to continue putting some effort on this and putting, and highlighting the problem and, and educating the community. So I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. DePray.
Krista DePray, Precinct 1. I was just looking for a little background knowledge, a little history lesson in regards to some of the data. It was spoken about. The testing was done originally back in starting 2014 on this, and it was periodic. In addition, it may have been before my time, kind of a two-parter here, when this all happened with Mezzo. I, I'm wondering what the timeline of that was. And lastly, how far back do these records go of hex? Thank you.
Response, Mr. Todeski.
A very good question. Up until, that's known as the Unregulated Contaminant Rule 2 in 2013, 2014, all Massachusetts water suppliers tested for total chromium. We never tested individually for hexavalent chromium. But because of the Hinkley, California incident, Kettelman, California incident, EPA decided that's, put all water suppliers over 10,000, the served over 10,000, test for hexavalent chromium across the country. And that's when you, we, we, we found that in the first round, and we saw in the fir, in the second round, between three and five parts per billion. So after that, once we could see that, where, you know, in, in itself, three to five out of, and, and a limit of 100 doesn't really mean a lot. You think you're doing fairly good. But when you see you're up higher than other surrounding towns, other communities, the first thing is why? Where is it coming from, and what needs to be done? That's, at that point there, that's when we did some investigation, took some sampling ourselves to confirm numbers, one. And then, two, advise Mezzo that we put some monitoring wells, one deep, one shallow, one deep, one shallow, on the two ends of our property, so we can monitor it. Once we see it's coming onto our property adjacent to Mezzo, the town manager, myself, and a few other folks did meet with Mezzo and informed of the situation, got DEP involved. Then DEP went even further up onto the Plantation Street area with those business owners. And we can see it's almost at 1,700 parts per billion up on Plantation Street, quite a distance from us, coming diagonal between what I would call the table talk business right now and the Mezzo building. That's the directional flow going, you know, toward the lake. And like I said a little bit earlier, not to bore anyone, hexavalent chromium is 7.2 times heavier than water. It makes it very deep. We like stuff to be lighter. It's easier to treat, and it's very mobile. It doesn't stay in one place always. That's the two difficult things. It goes along the fissures of the bedrock along Plantation Street and moves along somewhat laterally. Then it takes some turns wherever the fissures are in the bedrock up there. So it ends up at various locales, not always predictable. And even the hydrogeologists that have worked on that cannot tell me exactly where or when over there. So there is some guesswork obviously involved. But our, as the town, as I said before, the Board of Selectmen, the town's been very aggressive on this, very proactive on that. Our other fear is that what, what if doses has changed? Suppose we go up higher? Suppose you have a treatment, and we only could treat the 10. Suppose it goes up to 50? What do we, what do we do now? And that's why I didn't want to abandon the three wells right off the bat. We might need that to kind of divert flow, because we have another well down. You could pick up that in those six months, 12 months, two years. Who knows? No one can give me that guarantee. I can't give a guarantee to town meeting that you'll never have a problem there. So we have to also defend against that, and we have to defend, you know, protect our, protect our property and wells from what I would say illegal contaminants being released to the soil that's affecting you and everyone else here in town over there. So we're taking a multi-approach on this.
Further questions or comments? Yes, ma'am. Yep. Oh, Mrs. Matero.
Christine Matero, Precinct 4. Can someone on the town side just clarify for us? If we vote for this, what, what does it cause you to do? What will it cause? It's just not clear to me what this actually means. It's not a bylaw. Is it just a, your, our vote to what? Like, what is it actually going to do?
Christina, if I, if I understand the petitioners correctly tonight, they're asking us right now to continue a biological filtration treatment methodology or equal to, and to have informed, more information, either on the website or some other suitable means to keep everyone abreast of what test results are, are, and what ongoing treatment processes are being evaluated. Is that, is that your statement?
Yep.
Thank, yes, sir. I'm going to say a few words in a minute, but go ahead.
So, yeah, I mean, that's what we are asking for. But as you know now, you are getting all this information firsthand from, you know, our esteemed Mr. Todeski. And this is, and this is what was the journey for all of us. And that's what we are here, is like, why, why not share all this information for the whole town? That's what we are asking for, is like, continue testing, publish all these results or all this information so that there is a transparency, there is no ambiguity whether this 3.5 is hexavalent chromium breeding or total chromium. And coming back to, you know, like, yes, there is a plan. We know that there is a plan, but it's not out there. What's the goal? What is the goal that we are working towards is not clear as a resident. And that's what we are asking for, is if you can set up a plan, if we are working towards that zero goal, then why are we only retiring two wells out of three contaminated wells? If we know there is a third contaminated well, then, and if, if we are not treating that, then we are no, not going to get to the zero level. So all these goals, all, all these milestones need to be there, you know? And I understand it's a highly regulatory, um, environment, but it's not just only for Shrewsbury. You know, it's across the town. The regulations are for across the Commonwealth, you know? So this is not the first time that we are hearing about the regulations. So we were the only, one of the three towns that were flagged. We are not the only one well, water community in the Commonwealth. So someone is doing something right. So how can we leverage all this information and use it for our benefit and show that transparency is what we are asking for? Thank you.
Folks, just as a, for some further clarification, because some, one of the prior speakers, I think at the end of his remarks, said that he was either for or against this bylaw. That's actually incorrect. What, what, some, some of these petition articles, and in fact, other articles on the warrant that aren't petition articles, are specifically, the motion is specifically that the town meeting adopt a bylaw, either a new bylaw or amend an existing bylaw, repeal a bylaw. That's one of our legislative functions here as a legislative body. Another action that can be requested in the motion under a particular article can be that the town meeting express the opinion of the town meeting. It's, you'd call that a, we call that a resolution of town meeting. And Articles 21, and in fact, Article 22 are, both fall under the heading of resolutions or a sense of the town meeting or expressing an opinion of the town meeting. So let's keep those two concepts separate. There are several other types of actions the town meeting can take, legislative actions, budgetary actions, et cetera. But the, Article 21 and Article 22 are, are the, if you read the motion carefully, that's what you're voting on. That's a request that town meeting essentially express its opinion and ask the town to take certain actions. It's, it can't be mandated like in a bylaw. Further questions or comments with respect to Article 21? Mrs. Powers? Sorry. Can't see you.
Nancy Nelson, Precinct 10.
Oh, sorry.
You confused me with Lisa Powers last time, too.
You look like Mrs. Powers.
I'd like to move the question.
Okay, the motion for the previous question has been made and seconded. This is a motion to end debate on the substituted motion under Article 21. This motion is not debatable and must be voted on immediately. And just to recap, a vote in favor of this motion is a vote to end discussion of Article 21 and proceed to an immediate vote on the mo, on the substituted motion under Article 21. A no vote is a vote to continue the discussion of Article 21. This motion requires a two-thirds vote to pass. Will all those in favor of the motion to end debate on Article 21 please signify by saying aye? Would all those opposed to the motion to end debate on Article 21 please signify by saying no? I guess I'm in doubt on that one. Let's take a standing vote. You wanted to stretch your legs anyway, right? Tellers, please prepare to take a standing vote. Okay. Town meeting representatives, please remain in your seats. Would all those in favor of the motion to end debate on Article 21 please stand and remain standing until I ask you to be seated.
32.
40.
28. 28.
Okay, please be seated. Yes, sir. Can we have a mic down in row six? Raise your hand, sir.
Tom Loopy, Precinct 2. I believe that all the votes were not tallied up at the front table there. I think the first teller did not, recorded a 14 count. I don't believe you recorded the 14. Nope, from down here. Did you have a 14?
Will the tellers please come back up to the mics, stand down below, announce your number clearly and loudly?
40.
Everybody come up at once, please, all the tellers.
40.
14.
32.
28.
Please be seated. Would all those opposed to the motion to end debate on Article 21 please stand and remain standing until I ask you to sit?
0. 4.
Four.
Fourteen.
Ten.
Please be seated. Okay, the vote on, ending debate on Article twenty-one is yes, one hundred eighteen, no, thirty-five. The motion passes by a two-thirds vote. We will now proceed to an immediate vote on the re, on the substituted motion under Article twenty-one. This motion requires a majority vote to pass. Would all those in favor of the substituted motion under Article twenty-one please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, please signify by saying no? And the motion passes. Article twenty-two. This is also a petition article sponsored by Shrewsbury residents Martha and Paul Sheffer. Please refer to the substituted motion on pink paper in your supplemental packet. Is there a town meeting member who will move the substituted motion under Article twenty-two? Hand in the air? Sorry, Mrs., Ms. Deering? I have to say I moved the substituted motion under Article twenty-two. Is there a second? Okay, the substituted motion under Article twenty-two has been moved and seconded. That the town takes certain steps to ensure the quiet enjoyment of residents on or near Route one forty in the Town Center Historic District. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee voted on the original article not to recommend, but based on the substituted motion, we will reconsider this question as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pitney. Mr. and Mrs. Sheffer, the petitioners, petition sponsors have requested ten minutes to speak in favor of Article twenty-two. Please come to the lectern.
Good evening. Mr. Moderator, members of the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Town Leadership, Town Meeting Members, our supporters and observers. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present this important issue. Article twenty-two asks the town to restore the quiet enjoyment of the estates of property owners in the Shrewsbury Town Common Historic District and all the butters who are being affected by the overuse of Route one forty. Hopefully, most of you received a postcard that we sent out asking or suggesting that each member drive the section of Route one forty to get a perspective as to the level of disrepair of this road and to perhaps witness or experience the disturbance and the level of noise that the residents do experience by this issue. I'd like to talk for a minute about how we got here and why we're here today. I had approached members of the town DPW Highway Department, state DOT members, and was asked why the road was in such disrepair and what could be done to restore it. The town leadership had said that there was no money in the budget to fix it. And Mass DOT said that the town had the responsibility to repair this road. Now, I must admit that I was guilty myself, being Boylston Street and Route one forty is a state numbered road. I initially thought that it was the state's responsibility to do repairs and maintenance on this road. That is incorrect. And perhaps town leadership can confirm that when the item is open for discussion. We further asked the town and Mass DOT how we got here. Originally, we had asked the town that, and expressed that the quiet enjoyment, our peace and quiet was being disturbed because of the noise and the disrepair level that Route one forty was in. Originally, in the nineteen eighty-eight timeframe, Mass DOT involved with the town took on a special project that was quite extensive. There was over a million dollars in repairs and benefits or improvements that were done that the town benefited from. During that time, Route one forty was expanded and widened. Safety improvements included adding mailboxes to the opposite side of the road for safety purposes. Storm drains, sidewalks, and curbs were added to that time. Since that time and after the completion of the project, Mass DOT handed the project off to the town whereby the town had agreed to accept responsibility for the repair and maintenance going forward. That happened thirty-one years ago. To date, there has been very minimal or a minuscule amount of repair that's been done to Route one forty. And the last thirty-one years has shown the level of degradation that we see today. Since that time, the UPS facility on Route twenty has gone through an expansion. Federal Express has added a brand-new facility in the, just across the line in West Boylston. And UPS is planning a further expansion into Centec Business Park. In addition to that, the town commissioned an MDM study that illuminated additional concerns with commercial and heavy-duty truck traffic that is also in that same complex as the FedEx facility that's not factored by the MDM study. The study showed that somewhere in the vicinity of twenty-five thousand vehicles travel Route one forty on a daily basis. Speeds vary from twenty-five to fifty-five miles an hour. And trucks weighing up to forty tons are all on this road. A sample count of that section of one forty revealed approximately sixty-five manhole covers pepper or dot that surface between Main Street and Route two ninety. Almost every single one of the manhole covers is sunken and recessed below grade. And every time a large truck hits them, it sounds like a war zone. Disturbs people's sleep, rest, and quiet enjoyment. To that end, the following slide shows two properties. Abutting or next to the Town Common Historic District, in particular, the Red House, number forty-six Boylston Circle, or Street, excuse me. We met, my wife and I met with and stood in the home of Dennis Yaw, who owns the Red House. We saw firsthand the level of noise that they've experienced, cracks and damage in their home, and the difficulty that they're having trying to sell the house. Additionally, the house pictured in Merriam Ave sold three times from two thousand and seven to two thousand and seventeen. At the last sale in two thousand and seventeen, the house sold for twenty thousand dollars less than it did in two thousand and seven. People are being affected by this issue. This picture shows a sample of three of the manhole covers right near the Merriam Ave address and shows the manhole covers have significantly sunken in and that prior repairs have not done the trick and are in need of attention. In addition, our proposal had suggested multiple funding sources. We didn't want to come to the town and say, we have a problem, we need to fix it. My research has shown that Mass DOT's industry-standard pavement, considered state-top mix, typically has a life expectancy of eight to ten years. Again, this road hasn't been repaved in over thirty. We suggested another Massachusetts DOT project with assistance from them. Massachusetts Municipal Association has resources, Chapter ninety funding, and I'd like to touch on that for a moment. The town has received repeatedly Chapter ninety funds consistently from the state. Although I may be mistaken, my research in discussion with the town shows that it appears that the major portion, if not all of our infrastructure asset repair is done strictly by Chapter ninety. If it doesn't come in through there, it doesn't happen. TIP program, transportation improvement programs, Mass Works, supplemental legislative approvals, and the town's free cash to facilitate even the minor repairs that were requested. In summary, we ask the town to take steps to restore the quiet enjoyment of the property owners and the butters in this area that's been outlined in the, in the petition. Mass General Law, Chapter one eighty-six, Section fourteen defines quiet enjoyment as the enjoyment is a right to the undisturbed use and enjoyment of real property by a tenant, landowner, and taxpayer. With that, I'll turn it back over to the moderator. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheffer. Questions or comments with respect to Article twenty-two? Mr. Howland? Director of Public Works, Jeff Howland?
Good evening. Jeff Howland, DPW Director. I'd like to respond to some of the concerns raised by the petitioner. First, he is correct, the road was paved sometime around nineteen ninety-eight using TIP money, which is the same program that Ma, that Main Street is currently being reconstructed today. Town's responsible for the design. It, oh, one forty is a town-maintained road. The same process is happening now where Main Street was designed by the town under the guidelines of Mass DOT. Mass DOT then funds the construction of the, of the road. That's how Boylston Street was done sometime around nineteen ninety-eight or nineteen eighty-eight and how Grafton Street was done from the center of town down to Route nine back around two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. The process to be, be TIP-eligible is a long process. It takes years to get on the list, Mass, or the TIP process, they're already five years out on their list. So, in order to do it under the TIP program, A, you need to become eligible, which the town is eligible. We've already contacted several years ago the state to become TIP-eligible. However, to become TIP-eligible, the road must be brought up to state standards, which would require a complete reconstruction of Boylston Street, which includes widening of the road, adding additional sidewalks, bringing them up to ADA standards. The road was constructed on ADA standards in nineteen eighty-eight, which are no longer current standards. Bike lanes would have to be added. The cost is in roughly in the four to five million dollar range, which is similar to what Main Street is now. The town does get Chapter ninety money, roughly a little less than a million dollars a year. Our estimate to reconstruct Boylston Street, just milling and overlay Boylston Street, is one point two million. The cost would be little over a year-plus worth of road improvements. This, the Chapter ninety money gets used for all five hundred and forty-one roads that the town has. Back in two thousand and fifteen, the town had a pavement management plan done by a third-party engineering firm to look at all of our streets and give a pavement management number. Obviously, since two thousand and fifteen, we've done improvements to some of the streets. So, based upon November sixth, two thousand and eighteen, Boylston Street ranks one hundred and ninety-second of our worst road out of the five hundred and forty's plus. So, it is not in, near the worst road in town. We are looking at it and we continuously look at it on a yearly basis. In FY twenty, in this year's budget, we're gonna be doing Lake Street, Francis Ave, and South Street. If anybody's been on Lake, Lake, I'm sorry, Lake Street between Grafton Street and Route nine is in horrific condition. Francis Ave is in horrific condition. Those roads, those three roads alone, the cost to reconstruct those roads are nine hundred and something thousand dollars, which is our entire Chapter ninety money for fiscal twenty. Every year, we continuously look at which roads are the worst. Obviously, just because it's one hundred and ninety-second doesn't mean it's gonna be done on average, you know, twenty years from now. We continuously look at it and as the roads deteriorate, we move things up, move things down as necessary. Last year, we received a complaint to fix manholes in that Merriam Ave intersection, and we did repair three of those manholes. And we continuously will be repairing manholes as necessary. Speed. The speed for Route one forty, Boylston Street, was created in nineteen eighty-eight when the road was designed and then reconfirmed with a traffic study by DOT in nineteen eighty-eight. So, the speeds that are, that are on the road, twenty-five in the Historic District, forty miles an hour basically from Merriam Ave, just this side of Merriam Ave, up to just prior to about Hill Street is forty, and then fifty from Hill Street on, across the bridge. Those were established by a, a speed study done in nineteen eighty-eight, which are considered a special speed zone. To change that speed zone, an engineering study must be completed to, to check the speed. The engineering study, and I will warn, warn everybody, the engineering speed is based upon the actual speed today of vehicles, the eighty-fifth percentile of vehicles traveling that road during ideal conditions. So, the, the study will not be done when traffic is going slow. It will not be done when it's snowing, not when it's wet, not when it's raining, or when there's sun glare. It's done usually around ten o'clock. It's done for two hours, and you take the first car in line if there's a line of vehicles. The eighty-fifth percentile is what the average person, or eighty-five percent of the people feel safe driving at that speed. Why I say I warn you, 'cause typically today, if we were to do an engineering study, the speeds of that road will probably increase, not decrease. If we perform the study and the numbers come out higher, that's the speed we're obligated under state law to change the speed to. We did a speed study several years ago, Memorial Drive. The speed limit there is fifty. People were concerned that the speed, the vehicles were going too fast, and they want us to reduce the speed to forty. And felt that that was the speed. The actual speed was fifty-five. Mass DOT allowed us to keep the speed at fifty. Under Mass General Law, we are not allowed to change a speed as speed control because the, because we cannot use speed limits to, for police enforcement. Speed limits are dictated by what the most, what people feel are comfortable during ideal conditions. The, the town cannot regulate truck traffic on Route one forty. It is a state-numbered route. We cannot put a, a truck ban. We can, we are not allowed to do, to regulate trucks using that road. The speeds, the police department has done routine enforcement on that road and it's found, for the most part, most of the vehicles are not speeding. They may appear to be speeding, but they are not. And then, the, the town cannot regulate the pollution control on, or stop commercial vehicles to check emissions. That is solely regulated by the Department of, yeah. Well, EPA, but it's regulated in Massachusetts by the Department of Motor Vehicles when they get their inspection sticker. So, the police, the town has no ability or authority to regulate pollution control. So the town has no ability or authority to regulate pollution control. They also cannot regulate the weights on vehicles. That is solely done by the state police, and the town has no ability to do that. I think that's it for now.
Thank you, Mr. Howland. Further questions or comments with respect to the substituted motion under Article 22?
Max German, Precinct 8. I have two questions. Beyond speed regulation, manhole replacement, and repaving the road, is there anything that the town can do to sort of alleviate some of the problems that Mr. Sheffert has brought to the town meeting?
Response, Mr. Howland.
The manhole covers are, is the easiest one we can do?
Yeah.
And we, if manhole covers are brought to the town's attention, we try to get out there and fix them as expeditiously as we can. Highway Department only has six guys for the entire town for roadway improvements, so when we get to them, we can get to them. As I said last year, we repaired three in that Maryam Ave intersection.
And then my second one is, what is the process for the town in determining which manhole covers need to be replaced?
Two ways. One, when a citizen says we have a manhole, that's a problem. And the second is when the town drives over them, or the highway department sees them, they will repair them as we can.
Okay. That's all.
Further questions or comments? Mr. Ferretta.
Bernie Ferretta, Precinct 1. As a resident who lives in the area of Westwood and Route 140, I could certainly vouch for the volume of noise, particularly at 3:00 in the morning. I certainly feel badly for the people who live along 290 and live right on 140. I guess my question is, can anything be done to mitigate the volume of noise, like putting in sound barriers, or plantings, or some such thing that would tend to muffle the noise or reduce the volume of noise that is created by the traffic?
Response, Mr. Howland.
I'll start with the sound barrier.
Yep.
Sound barriers tend to be, it might be an immediate improvement at that residence. The problem with sound is it tends to hit that and go around, and the one who's on the end will get all of the sound. So the barrier would have to go literally from the center of town all the way into Boylston, with nothing in between that would be able to get cars across. Studies by Department DOTs, sound barriers become more of an issue than they are a help. They are a help to the immediate, but not for everybody else. Plantings, the right-of-way along Boyle Streets, I believe, is right at the backside of the sidewalk or very close to it, so any plantings would have to be done on private property.
So there's no, as far as you can see, there is no way that can be mitigated?
I would say that's correct. Landscaping doesn't do much. You would have to do multiple, multiple rows of plantings for sound to be mitigated.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments with respect to Article 21? Ms. Deering?
Martha Deering. Ooh, that's a loud one. Martha Deering, Precinct 4. It seems to me that we have a bit of a quandary here. We have a state road that we are required to maintain, and we have to maintain it because of the state regulations that require us to allow the road to be deteriorated and to damage local property. So through you, Mr. Moderator, to Representative Kane, can you help us?
State Representative Kane, if you care to comment.
I can try. I would defer to Jeff in terms of what, if any, action he believes I can ask DOT to either relieve us of or to do to date. Nothing has been brought to my attention that we could ask for.
Mr. Howland, do you want to make another comment?
Yes, so just clarification, Route 140 is town-owned and maintained. It was just reconstructed using state funds in 1988. It is a town road.
Follow-up, Ms. Deering?
As I recall, 140 is a Massachusetts state road, correct?
No, it's state-numbered.
It's a state-numbered road, right? So why isn't the state maintaining it?
Response, Mr. Howland.
Route 140 was an old county road, even though it's state-numbered. Maple Ave is a state-owned and maintained, even though everybody probably thinks it's a town road. That is not. As is Main Street from Maple Ave to Northborough, it's also a state-maintained. But Route 140 is a town route, state route, that was given to the town via the county route, as it was an old county layout.
So if I can follow up, if 140 goes into other towns, then 140 in those towns is owned by those towns?
Yes. The only spots, so the bridge over 290, is state-owned. So the intersections of Wachusett, Barnard, up through Colonial Drive into Northborough is state-owned as part of the I-290 interchange. From just north of the town line through Boylston is town-owned by Boylston. Similarly, south on Grafton, that is owned by Grafton.
Oh, wow, that's messed up.
Mr. Sheffert?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I neglected to mention one thing, and I wanted to address it to the town meeting. There is one option that was mentioned in our article, but I failed to discuss it, and that is for the town to consider this area being heavily settled or thickly settled. That would allow the town to apply the same standard as is applied with several other roads in town, i.e. Mill Street, South Street, and those streets have similar densities with residential houses close to the street, and they have the ability to change the speed limit and would also decrease the degradation that the road sees because of the heavy trucks at 40 tons traveling at high speeds. Thank you.
Mr. Howland, just for a moment?
In response to that, by definition, that a section of Boylston Street probably would classify as thickly settled, but because it is a posted speed limit, the only way to change that regardless if it's the definition of a thickly settled, it meets it, still has to be done through an engineering study, not just by changing the speed because it's thickly settled.
Further questions or comments?
Martha Pereira, Precinct 6. My son owns a house at the bottom of the hill on 140 between the center of town and 290, and the noise does exist there, and he was able to change his windows. These historic houses can't really do some of those things to help mitigate the sound inside the house. But we have to think of this as an issue for our town with the volume. I travel Lake Street virtually every day. Yes, it's a mess, but the number of cars on Lake Street with me does not match the number of cars, trucks, et cetera, vehicles that are on 140, at the speed that they're going on 140. And then they hit the center of town, and I've actually witnessed people in line going up the hill toward the center of town, they're stopped. And as one of those large 18-wheeler trucks tries to get started again, I've witnessed them roll back into the cute little sedan that's on the back of it and crush it. There was more traffic and more issues. That's another noise, and we have that repeatedly. I am, after all these years in this town since 1977, shocked to hear that the plowing on 140 belongs to this town. Is that correct? Because I drive for the last 26 years south on 140 from Kennelworth, and the last couple of years, the plowing on that road has been horrible. So I would like to ask this town to review, relook at what it's doing for that high-volume road, and maybe reset some priorities to take care of the vast number of people that are using it, and maybe have to change the order of repairs. And they are needed.
Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Pitney?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee has voted to not recommend Article 22.
Pat, start over again. Your mic was off.
Sorry about that. The Finance Committee has reconsidered Article 22 and has voted by a 7 to 2 vote to not recommend.
Thank you. Further questions or comments with respect to Article 22?
Lorain Boscone, Cambria, Precinct 9. I have a question, actually, of what we're actually voting on, because there's so many different things that are presented here, one being thickly settled, one being Chapter 86, Section 14. And I'm very confused with that chapter and section, because that really pertains to leesies and lessors. It has nothing to do with quiet enjoyment, other than the fact that quiet enjoyment means that if you buy a home, that it's free of liens or any other such things that would impede the ownership of that property. Maybe Town Council could explain it better. I'm not an attorney. So why that's even in this document or motion, I don't understand it. As far as the, from 290, or making this thickly settled from the center of town to 290, I would be opposed to that. If anybody's ever traveled on this road, it's backed up pretty significantly in both directions, south and north. In the afternoon, on Route 290, it backs up almost a half a mile to even get off the exit. So I'm totally against this if we're trying to change the speed limit. I'm all for fixing manhole covers and manhole covers throughout the town and roadways. But once again, I'm not sure what we're voting on, because there's too many different articles here, or confusions, and most specifically, Chapter 186, Section 14.
Okay, before I ask for any other comments, I'm just going to repeat what I said at the, near the end of the discussion of Article 21, just to remind everybody of what you are being asked to consider. You look at the motion, in this case, the substituted motion. That's the language on the pink sheet in Article 22 in boldface type. And that's the, this article, as the last article did, asks the town meeting to express its opinion. A resolution, again, is, I think, the correct term here. Everything in italics is considered the purpose or background or information provided by the petitioners, which they believe will assist in helping town meeting members understand what they're asking for. But it's the motion that you are being asked to vote on. So limit your frame of reference on your vote to what's contained in the language in boldface on the substituted motion. Mr. Sheffert, did you have any response to the speakers?
I'd like to respond to a couple of the concerns of the person. By the way, thank you for your question. I don't know that I can remember all of them, but I wanted to start with Mass General Law, Chapter 186, and this is verbatim quote. "A covenant that promises the grantee or tenant of an estate and real property will be able to possess the premise in peace, without disturbance by hostile claimants, and quiet enjoyment is the right to the undisturbed use and enjoyment of real property by a tenant or landowner." That is clearly not something that we've been able to do, because, for whatever reason, the town has not repaired or kept up with the repair of Route 140. It hasn't been paved in over 31 years, and we're asking the town to take whatever steps necessary. We want them to be in compliance with Mass General laws. That is our request.
Further questions or comments? Mr. Madouse, Town Council's Stephen Madouse.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to address the question of... Can you hear me now? Thank you. To address the question from the town meeting member about the citation to Chapter 186, Section 14. That is a residential landlord-tenant relationship, or as the petitioner cited, grant or grantee. The town doesn't covenant quiet enjoyment to residents for their residential premises. The town would seek to abate public nuisances, so I think that was probably the intention. But we don't covenant on a private property relationship with homeowners. We have a duty to the public as a whole. So I understand the concept, but unfortunately, it's not the correct citation for this effort.
Further questions or comments with respect to Article 22? Am I missing a hand in the air? Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the substituted motion under Article 22 please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no?
No.
And the motion does not pass. Article 23. This is, again, a petition article sponsored by town meeting member Melissa Hollenbach. Please refer to the substituted motion on purple paper in your supplemental packet. Ms. Hollenbach, do you have a substituted, do you have a motion under Article 23?
Thank you. I move that we, excuse me, I move that an elected nominated committee and board study committee be established in this substituted motion.
Okay, so can you just restate that and say you moved the substituted motion under Article 23?
I move that an elected and nominated committee and boards...
You've either got to read it verbatim, or you've got to just move the substituted motion under Article 23.
Okay. I just moved that we moved the substituted motion for Article 23.
Is there a second? Okay, the substituted motion under Article 23 has been moved and seconded, that the town establish an elected and nominated committee and board study committee, also known as a town comparison committee. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Pitney?
The Finance Committee has reviewed the substituted motion and has voted to not recommend by a vote of 6 to 2.
Okay, Ms. Hollenbach has requested 10 minutes to present in favor of Article 23. Go ahead, Missy.
Again, I don't know if everyone wants to move or be blown out there. For the past 12 years or so, I've spent a lot of time looking at other town websites, reviewing their information about their schools, libraries, and their recycling information. And some of those towns have some pretty odd committees, some really horrible websites, but some also have some really good information and great ideas that I think would be helpful to Shrewsbury. So I created this study committee article based on the previous two fiscal study committees to see if there might be some other committees that might be helpful to us, or any rules or procedures that might help us. Many towns are experiencing the same issues that we are, and instead of reinventing the wheel, let's see what others have done. 22 years ago, when I came here, a lot has changed since that time. There have been two new town managers. We've had new department configurations recently. We've had many new employees. We've had new school superintendents, continued population increases, new schools, and extreme demographic changes. The world's changed a lot. Spags is gone. We have a new colorful bridge. The Town Manager Act was created in 1953, and as you will see, it has had a few amendments over the year. And most of those amendments were around when we hired this guy named Dan Margato to be town manager, and so we had a lot of changes around that time. But we've added a few new committees since then, and we've also seen some committees go dormant, and we've also seen some be deleted. But so to speak, to see if there's some way we can improve on our committees. Some say if it's not broken, then don't fix it. But when you think about the wonderful changes in the world, because someone said, I bet there can be another way, it does kind of make you wonder. So I'm not going to bore you with going through all the amendments and stuff. You have an amended article on the back there, and then also you can look on the town website if you want to look at more of the amendments. But I don't want to bore you at this time of the night. So many of us were not even born in 1953. So, many of us were not even born in 1953, but think of the changes that we've had since then. The internet, personal computers that we can hold in our hand, using a telephone and actually seeing the person that you're talking to, landing on the moon, Civil Rights Act. Many towns go through what is called a Charter Review Committee every five to 10 years to see if their form of government is working. And part of that review is also looking at their committees and their boards and looking at the rules and regulations. This is not a charter review. This is just looking at boards and committees and their rules and regulations. So in the article, I wanted us to compare the towns that we're continually using for comparison with the Personnel Committee and with the School Board. Here's just a few, a listing of some of them. And then the other thing is people wanted to know, well, what kind of questions we'd be looking at? I put a few in the article, but the reality is I wanted the committee to kind of come up with their own as well. So I did look at the Commonwealth from the Office of the Inspector General, a publication that they put out for members who are about to join public boards or commissions, and just kind of things and tips for them to look at. And some of the questions they told them to think about is, "Does your board have a written policy or practice related to managing public records requests? Does your board have a practice related to the use of personal devices or emails? How often does the board meet? Is the board required to meet on a specific schedule? And if yes, what is that schedule? Does your board follow written procedures for meetings, such as Robert's Rules of Order, or maybe Cushion's, like our Town Meeting? How are officers selected? Does the board have committees? And if so, how are members elected to serve on them? Are there term limits for officers, board members, or committee members?" Then there's some other questions we could ask. What criteria for serving on a board? Are they simply a nice person, and maybe they are known to the choosers? Or are they qualified like a job candidate? The use of technology for snowbirds and for others who are not able to attend in person, or other uses of technology to assist the boards, and are there citizenship requirements? Some of the towns I'm gonna be looking at, just really, I picked out what I thought would be kind of interesting committees. And one town is Franklin. It's very similar to Shrewsbury in population, income, and schools, but they do have a Town Council form of government, not Town Meeting. They also have a section on their website with a grid listing committees, how they're appointed, how many spots and vacancies, and how to apply. And you can basically see at a glance what all the committees are and what they're doing and what their needs are. Franklin also has the list of things, but I'm gonna point out the ones that I really find interesting. One is the Cultural Commission. This is different than the Cultural Committee where we get the grants from the state. In Franklin, they established this two years ago to attract artists and cultural enterprises, encourage business and job development, establish the district as a tourist destination, and preserve and reuse historic buildings, enhance property values, and foster local cultural development. They also have another one called the Design Review, and this is something a few other towns have. The purpose of this is to promote safe, functional, and attractive development of business and commercial areas, to preserve and enhance the New England character of the town's commercial centers and thoroughfares as a valid general welfare concern, to unify commercial properties both visually and physically with surrounding land uses, to facilitate a more healthful urban atmosphere, to protect and preserve the unique and cultural features within the town, and to protect commercial properties by enhancing the town's appearance. Another town that's very similar to Shrewsbury is Needham. They have a similar population, tax rate, and they also have a representative Town Meeting. And on their main page for boards and committees, they have a little volunteer opportunity button up at the top. And Needham is, like Shrewsbury, has gone through a lot of residential changes where people are buying the smaller, older homes and putting up the big ones. You know what I'm talking about? So what they did is, they were concerned about that impact, the impact on these new and expanded homes are having on the character of the surrounding residential neighborhood. The Needham Planning Board is appointing a large house review study committee to develop recommendations on how best to ensure that new residential construction will complement existing buildings, settings, and neighborhood character. The committee will also explore how the updating and upgrading of structures in such neighborhoods can and should be done, while at the same time conserving the neighborhood's distinctive qualities as changes occur. They also have a community revitalization trust fund. This is to receive gifts and bequeaths that will be used towards lasting improvements of the public common areas in the town. Improvements will consist of items such as benches, sculpture, artwork, hardscape, lighting, et cetera. They also have something that they, what their group is called, the Tax Relief Chapter 166 of the Massachusetts Acts of 1988, which authorizes cities and towns to establish a fund for the purpose of accepting donations for property tax relief for certain seniors and disabled taxpayers. The acceptance of the state statute allows the tax collector to include with the tax bill and closure explaining how donations could be made to the fund. The committee is charged with the review of applications and distributing the funds. They also have a Technology Committee. This is, our regular members of the board shall be residents of the town who have knowledge and experience in telecommunications and information technology. Shrewsbury has an extremely talented population in this case. Another town that I've looked at because it was on the list, not necessarily that it's like Shrewsbury, is Northbridge. Northbridge has an earth removal board, no clue what that is. They have a Fields Committee. They have a Green Committee. They have a Housing Partnership Committee, a Recycling Committee, a Safety Committee, and a Stormwater Committee. Natick is very similar to Shrewsbury with similar population, tax rate, and they also have a five-member board of selectmen. On our website, under the heading of Boards and Committees, is a section for volunteers with a great listing of openings and requirements and how to apply. They have, some of their boards are, again, they also have a Design Review Committee. They have an Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee. They have an Information Systems Advisory Board. They have an Opioid Task Force. They have a Senior Property Tax Exemption Study and a Sustainability Committee. Millbury's on the list, but again, Millbury's not really like Shrewsbury. But they do have some interesting boards and committees. One is an Addiction Assistance Alliance. And this one's a kind of cool, because we're gonna be looking at this in Shrewsbury in a few years, a bicentennial committee, except in our case, it'll be a tricentennial. So, you know, looking at other towns that might have these types of committees can help us set one up so we can go on and have a nice party for our 300th birthday. They also have a Ponds and Lakes Commission. Yes, we have a Lake and Sigamond, but their ponds are also included in this one. They have a Recycling Education Committee and a Small Business Saturday Task Force. So, some of the people are gonna say, "Well, we have a hard time filling our current boards already." Well, think about it. How do you hear about the openings on the boards and the committees in town? You happen to be on the town website, and there just happens to be the opening there, or somebody that you know in town calls and tells you. Today, I think right now, we still have openings on the Board of Health, and I think on the Disability Commission. Did we hear an announcement at any point that these were open? This would've been a great venue to announce that some of these are opening. I think that maybe we could do a little bit better job. One town, Acton, actually has a volunteering coordinator, a coordinating committee, whose basic job is the volunteers to find people for the committees, with the role of finding and promoting these opens. That's all they do. Their committee is to find committee members. So some people fear that this might actually create a schism within the town because of the way I selected the members, that I chose Route 9. Route 9 is just a big demographic thing that were easy to see, a big, you know, landmark, so to speak. I really wanted to pull in people from town who were not Town Meeting members. I wanted to pull in people who might be interested in Town Meeting or other things in town, but have no clue really how to get involved. So I feel that this might be a good way to engage residents who are interested but do not have any experience with the town. And lastly, we have an extremely educated and talented population. I think we could tap into them a little bit more. And it's possible that we could educate and possibly engage more residents with this study, and possibly create new boards or consolidate or add to our own committee. We don't need to keep reinventing the wheel. We will never know what we're missing unless we look and ask, and information is power. Thank you.
Thank you, Missy. Selectmen and Finance Committee. Repopulating the stage. Questions or comments with respect to the substituted motion under Article 23? Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to take an opportunity to make a few comments. My opinion, having worked in a number of communities in central Massachusetts and understanding the variety of boards and committees, it's interesting to see how many towns operate so differently. I think that's one of the geniuses, ability of our home rule, to allow communities to self-organize. But one other genius that occurs to me, I think, is the, is in fact, the 1953 Town Manager Act, in that the reason I think so many other communities have different committees is because they didn't have a charter as old as ours, or as well organized, and that decisions are made through organizations established through that charter in a very streamlined fashion. I see a lot of committees that operate in other towns where here in Shrewsbury, it's managed through professional employees or consolidated groups and boards who have a dedicated role to overseeing that. So we don't have fractioned and segmented Parks Committees or Recreation Committees. We have a Parks and Recreation Commission. In Grafton, they have a DPW Committee. Here, we have a wonderful DPW staff. So it just occurs to me that the reason that we're different is because we're out ahead of many of those communities and found a very professional and effective way to manage the town. Those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
Further questions or comments on Article 23? Did I just see Anne in the middle here? Mrs. Icardi?
Thank you. Mary Icardi, precinct 5. To the Town Manager. Who establishes committees? If this were to go forward, or, and I guess my question is, like yourself, having worked with a few municipalities, there are variations. Certainly Franklin has a Town Manager Town Council, even a stronger management form than this, and has a lot of boards and committees. So to me, it's more about, are we welcoming to citizen groups, and how would they be established? If, say, somebody wanted to, we have a Trails Committee, for example. How did that get started? Should it be a grassroots sort of, should we come up with the committees we really want to do? I know recycling may have been a result of Missy being a pain and then you-know-what. You know, so how do they get established, and do we really need this? With all due respect to my dear friend, a study committee to study the committees of the boards and committees that we can't get people to sign up for. I agree wholeheartedly that we could do a better job of recruiting, getting the words out, announcing vacancies more on things. But, you know, if one of these was one that somebody wanted to form, how would we do it?
Response, Mr. Mizikar, and I'll let Ms. Hollenbach add some words, too.
So, my experience, there's a variety of ways. Committees can be established through bylaw. They can be established, I think, most frequently, or are most frequently established through the executive body, the Board of Selectmen in most towns. I think if you went back and looked at most of these committees that were listed this evening, that's how they may have been established. Or, and I can't say that I'm familiar with every community's charter, but a lot of entities, like a Board of Fire Engineers, which was referenced in Millbury, is done because they don't have a charter. And the Massachusetts General Laws that were established, you know, who knows, in the 1800s or whenever that law came into play, established the rules for how municipalities were to operate at that time. If you don't have the framework in place that we have in the Manager Act, you default to the general laws. For instance, the town of Lester, where I was previously, had a Board of Fire Engineers because they didn't have a charter, and they default to every prevailing general law. So there are a variety of ways. I would say the most common way is through the executive. And I'm certainly not an expert as many of you have been, but, you know, one of the other things that I think Shrewsbury does well is disband committees that are no longer needed. We have a bylaw that says if, you know, if they don't report back to Town Meeting, they're deemed, or make an annual report, they're deemed disbanded. And a lot of other towns just keep these around and keep them on the books, and they kind of flounder, but aren't necessarily active. So having a community listed in name doesn't, or a committee listed in name doesn't necessarily mean it's functioning as well.
Thanks, Mr. Mizikar. Ms. Hollenbach, did you want to make any response to Mrs. Icardi?
Sure. In the past, I have tried to get committees. The first one was involving the Green Communities Act, when I brought that before the Town Meeting, and then also another one for recycling. So I have tried to bring things there. And also, I think what we're seeing, we're seeing a lot of citizens' petitions coming from members from outside of Town Meeting. I think people do wanna get a little bit more involved, and I think we're also becoming a little concerned about our quality of life. The people with the water petition aren't here anymore, but, you know, would maybe a water petition, or some, no, water petition, excuse me, a water committee or board, not water board, a water committee, quality of water committee, would something like that have been a little bit better? You know, made us feel a little more comfortable and had the dialogue going back and forth. The town of Needham, who has undergone the same issues that we, actually, they've been going through this longer, where you're seeing older homes, older, smaller homes being ripped down, and the McMansions and the duplexes going into their place. You know, other towns are going through this as well. So why don't we look at, you know, some of the things that they're doing and to learn from them as well? The other thing is, yeah, there were a lot of towns that had some really dead committees, and I try not to put them on there because I really wanted things that would be something that we would look at. The other thing is the senior citizen taxation form. You know, a lot of people don't know that we can do these things, that we can ask the Town Manager or the Town Meeting to have a committee or board. So this is kind of why I'm putting it out there, to raise the experience and the information to people that are not here, to the whole town, that these are what the town committees and boards are, and, you know, these are what other things can be done. So it's really more to empower everyone else in Shrewsbury and to help them getting more involved.
Further questions or comments with respect to Article 23? Mr. Molina.
Thank you, Jason. Jason Molina, precinct 1. You know, as somebody who's in the workforce now, one of the things I hear constantly at work is continuous improvement. Continuous improvement in your own skills and also within the company, improving the capabilities that you bring to that company and how they can improve, because it's about the bottom line for that for-profit company. I think the same principles do apply for any organization. Continuous improvement is something we should always be striving for, because, you know what, we don't always have the answer. We can't always presume that we know the best, and there's always gonna be something out there that perhaps, maybe they are doing better than we are. You know, other towns do look at us as well, but perhaps other towns have opportunities that, you know, maybe perhaps we're missing. You know, the Town Manager had mentioned that, you know, we are doing things because we have staff that are professional in doing them on a, you know, consistent basis and can focus on them. I think also, having worked with Missy for a very long time now, and I understand where she's coming from, there are some subject matters which the current boards have no expertise in. So if we look at things that are on the periphery, things that we don't always think about particularly, like, you know, recycling is one of the thorniest items that, you know, a lot of town members need to learn, be more educated on. Yes, we can probably get more funding from, you know, from Massachusetts, you know, DEP to help us in that regard. But if there was a committee already established in that space, you would've already had some of the better practices already out there so that the selectmen or other committees don't have to focus on that. You know, so it really is about enriching and expanding our quality of life in Shrewsbury beyond the general services that the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager already focus on. So again, keep your mind on expansion of quality of life, and this is the opportunity that we have, the Missys bringing us to focus on, which is, are there any other committees that are active, that are out there in Massachusetts, that bring additional quality? Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Deering.
Martha Deering, precinct 4. I've had the privilege to serve on a number of boards and committees in town. And the committees that I served on were ones that actually came out of Town Meeting. The first one was the Hattedas Waste Bylaw Committee. The second one was the First Fiscal Study Committee. Those came- Those came out of what we raised as issues. So I think there's another way to do that. I think the town has been very good about that, and I really object to having a committee to study committees.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Petrucci?
Melanie Petrucci, Precinct 1. I'm going to move the question.
Okay, a motion for the previous question has been made and seconded. This is a motion to end debate on the article before us. This motion is not debatable and must be voted on immediately. A vote in favor of the motion is a vote to end discussion of Article 23 and to proceed to an immediate vote on the motion under, the restated motion under Article 23. A no vote is a vote to continue the discussion of Article 23. This motion requires a two-thirds vote to pass. Will try a voice vote first. Would all those in favor of the motion to end debate on Article 23 please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion to end debate on Article 23, please signify by saying no.
No.
And the motion passes. We will now, by a two-thirds vote. We will now proceed to an immediate vote on the restated motion under Article 23. This motion requires a majority vote to pass. Would all those in favor of the substituted motion under Article 23, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Would all those opposed, please signify by saying no?
No.
And the motion does not pass. Article 24. Town meeting members, as I have previously stated to the sponsor of Article 24, Town Meeting Member Ben Tartaglia and others, and as I announced at last week's pre-town meeting, I am taking the unusual step of declining to put Article 24 before you tonight for a vote, due to the fact that, in my opinion, as well as the opinion of Town Council Medaus, Article 24 is legally deficient in its wording and does not comply with the requirements of a petition article under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 10, as well as our town, our town bylaw, our town general bylaws, Article 2, Section 11, authorizes me to take this action. As originally stated and as printed in the town meeting warrant, Article 24 does not provide any description of the subject matter of the article or the petition underlying the article, and therefore must be ruled out of order and taken off the warrant for this meeting. The fact that the proposed motion under Article 24 contains the text of Mr. Tartaglia's petition and does thereby provide notice of the subject matter of the article does not cure the defect in the wording of the warrant article itself. Unlike a motion made with regard to a warrant article, an article itself cannot be amended or restated once it is placed on the warrant. That is the difference between the restated motions under several articles on this year's warrant and Article 24, which cannot be amended at this point in time in order to cure its defects. I want to assure you that I do not take this action lightly, and in fact, this is the first time I've had to take this action on a warrant article in my 10 years and more than 20 annual and special town meetings as your moderator. However, it's my obligation in this position to make sure that every article in motion that is put before you is properly drafted and in compliance with the state laws and our town bylaws and procedural rules that we are bound to follow as a, as a legislative body. I am always available and happy to assist any citizen with advice regarding the proper drafting of a petition article before signatures are collected and before the petition is presented to the Selectmen for placement on a town meeting warrant. Please take me up on this offer at any time. Now we'll move to Article 25. This is also a petition article sponsored by Town Meeting Member Paul Schwab, Shrewsbury Resident Robert Ryan, and others. Please refer to the printed motion on pages 63 to 69 of the Finance Committee Book. Mr. Schwab, do you have a motion under Article 25? Do you have a mo, do you want to, do you want to move the printed motion under Article 25?
Yes, I'm going to move the printed motion on Article 25.
And is there a second? Okay, so the printed motion under Article 25 has been moved and seconded, that the town adopt a Shrewsbury Historic Preservation Bylaw. Finance Committee Recommendation, Mr. Pitney?
The Finance Committee does not recommend Article 25.
Mr. Schwab has requested a few minutes to make a statement concerning Article 25.
Thank you, Mr. Schwab. Yes, I'll keep things very brief, and I apologize in advance, I didn't realize having a presentation would force all of you to move. I'm very sorry for that. Again, folks, I'll be very brief, I just need a few minutes of your time. Good evening, my name's Paul Schwab, I live in Precinct 1, and I'm here to represent the petitioners for Article 25. Thank you for taking the time to hear me this evening. I realize it's been a long two nights, and potentially a third night, and as a result, plan to make this very brief. I'd like to provide a summation of the work we've done and our path forward. We've respectfully listened closely to the thoughts and concerns of all stakeholders, and as a result of that, we're actually asking you to vote down our article this evening. As a result, it's not our intention to debate the merits or shortcomings of our bylaw proposal. When the evening concludes, we'll be distributing a one-page handout with some contact info, some answers to important questions for everyone to digest on their own time. I want to make very clear that this bylaw proposal is a result of a great deal of work, concerns citizens who volunteered their time, and were initially tasked by the Board of Selectmen with the charge to focus, quote, "on the matter of historic structures located in town worthy of long-term protection from demolition," end quote. The energy of the group was focused on this charge from the first meeting in August 2018 to the time its final report was delivered in January of 2019. Along the way, it became evident that a preservation bylaw was the most appropriate way to address the charge set by the Board of Selectmen. In the end, we came forward with a bylaw proposal that was supported by all of the active members of the committee. Two distinct groups have been responsible for this work. First, the Shrewsbury Historical Preservation Committee, which is different than the Historical Commission and the Historic District Commission, and after its dissolution, the Preserve Shrewsbury's History Citizens Group. The SHPC worked in a formal manner to address the charge by the Board of Selectmen, created a foundational historic home inventory, report, and the original draft of the preservation bylaw. Once the Board of Selectmen voted down the bylaw proposal and disbanded the SHPC, a citizens' petition was filed, and the citizens' group took over the work. In the span of about seven weeks, this citizens' group has continued the work of reaching out to property owners, holding a public forum, meeting with town officials, communicating with the Massachusetts Historical Commission, and promoting the bylaw. It was during that time that we realized we needed to take a step back and do some additional work to fine-tune our bylaw and further develop our proactive measures. These proactive measures will assist historic property owners in the preservation, restoration, and potential sale of their homes. Shrewsbury is a town rich with history and wonderful landmarks that serve as a tribute to our past. We strongly, we feel strongly about preserving our history for future generations to learn from and enjoy. We'll bring this bylaw proposal back to a future town meeting, so that the citizens of Shrewsbury can have a voice in preserving the landmarks that commemorate who we are as a town. In the coming weeks, we'll be reaching out to all town meeting members to invite you to a public meeting, so that we can hear your favorite feedback, share our goals moving forward. Please be on the lookout for this communication, your email, and on our Facebook page. As you leave this evening, again, if you would, take one of our handouts. I greatly appreciate your patience and understanding, and humbly ask that you vote down our proposal this evening.
Questions or comments with respect to Article 25? If you've got a hand up in the air, please wave it. I don't see any. Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring, I'm sorry? Oh, Mr. Molina. Was that a delayed wave? Or am I really that hard of sight?
Delayed. Sorry. Jason Molina, Precinct 1. I'll be very brief. I want to thank the petitioners for bringing this article to light. I understand their concern, their concerns, and I'm glad that they're taking the motions to bring this back to a future town meeting. One thing is, I, I was really looking forward to actually voting on this favorably. I really believe that a mark of Shrewsbury and a lot of towns in New England is the historical character of those towns. Without the historical character, we are just a sprawl of urbanism that will eventually come, and I've certainly seen that in, in other places in our, in our region where you pretty much have swallowed up those historical homes and now have just become part of the larger community of, let's say, Worcester, or Boston, or, or, let's say, New York, if you will. You know, just become dissolved. So it's very important that we do keep the historical nature to some regard in our town in some form, and I think that the last part of this is that these petitioners are bringing to us an opportunity as a tool, as a tool in the tool chest to keep portions of our town historical. And lastly, remember, this is not a forever do not demolish, it is an opportunity to assist in preserving where we can, where we will, and where there's an opportunity. Thank you.
Further questions or comments with respect to Article 25? Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass. Would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 25, please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, please signify by saying no?
No.
And the motion does not pass. Article 26. Mr. DiPaolo?
Move the printed motion under Article 26?
Second.
Printed motion under Article 26 has been moved and seconded, that the town accept Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22H, being the so-called property tax exemption for Gold Star parents, which establishes a real estate tax exemption to the full amount of taxable valuation of real property for the surviving parents or guardians of a soldier, sailor, member of the National Guard, or veteran who during active duty service suffered an injury or illness documented by the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs that was the proximate cause of their death or is missing in action and presumed dead. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finance Committee unanimously recommends Article 26.
Questions or comments with respect to Article 26? Mr. Mizikar?
Just one point of clarification. I made a misstatement at a Finance Committee hearing. The town, so questions have come up whether spouses can receive such exemption, and the town, while the general laws already provide for such an exemption without local adoption, so that is already in place. So this would just enable parents to receive a full tax exemption.
Further questions or comments with respect to Article 26? No, don't see any. Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass. Would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 26, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no? And the motion passes by a majority vote. Article 27.
I move the printed motion under Article 27?
Second.
The printed motion under Article 27 has been moved and seconded, that the town amend the zoning bylaw, Section 7B relating to area, frontage, yard, and lot coverage requirements. I will make a note that I've received a copy of a letter to the town clerk from the chairman of the Shrewsbury Planning Board stating that on April 4th and May 2nd, the Planning Board held public hearings regarding Article 27, and at the close of the hearing, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article 27. Mr. Cahill?
Thank you, and thank you, Town Meeting Members. Thank you all for sticking around. I'm going to be as brief as I possibly can, I know the hour's getting late, so I'm just going to jump right into it. So for Article 27, this is the floor area ratio for duplexes article. I think as many of you might recall, last year in 2018, at town meeting, town meeting approved a zoning article which gave the Planning Board the power over duplexes that would require that any new duplex that came before them would require a special permit. That special permit was based upon the determination that the design of the proposed duplex was compatible with the mass and height of other residential buildings in the neighborhood around it. As you can imagine, and as it was brought up by the time by the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen, their concerns, despite their endorsements of this zoning article last year, was that this whole idea about what is compatible and not having a very good definition of what does compatibility mean. And in the ensuing months, their concerns, in my opinion, proved true with the Planning Board, and that as more and more duplexes have come before the Board, determining that compatibility has become an issue. So the Planning Board, Board of Selectmen, and a few others turned to the Planning Department and said, well, what can we do about this to help, help the town out in this regard? Well, one of the well-known tools in planning circles is something called floor area ratio. That is where you take the floor area, sorry, the gross floor area, right, and you divide it by the lot size that that building is sitting on, and you get your ratio through that, right? So it's about regulating the amount of the gross floor area that can be built on a lot and tying that amount to the size of the lot you're on, right? So a floor area ratio, again, to reiterate how it works out, to determine it, is you take the gross floor area of all the buildings on a lot greater than 200 square feet, and you divide it by the lot size. That gives you a number, which is your ratio. So for example, if you had a 20,000-square-foot lot and a 7,000-square-foot of gross floor area building on that lot, you would take that 7,000-square-feet of gross floor area and divide it by the 20,000-square-feet of that lot, which equals .35. So that .35 is your floor area ratio. Now, of course, you can do it in reverse. If you didn't have a building on a 20,000-square-foot lot, and you wanted to know, well, the town said it's .35 is our maximum, how much can I build? You take 20,000 square feet, you multiply it by .35, that gives you 7,000. So when we're talking about duplexes, most duplexes, as we know, are divided in half equally between one unit for the duplex and the other unit, so that would be 3,500 square feet of gross floor area per unit in this scenario I just made up. Now, the Planning Department, and this had not been done before, worked with the GIS Coordinator and the Engineering Department, Dan McCollum, good guy, to collect the floor area ratio of all the dwelling units, single-family and duplexes in the B2 zoning district, which we did. That was 1,826 of you. It was a lot. And 1,600 of those were roughly, were the single-family, and about 212 were the two families. And what we found is for the, the average floor area ratio for single-family, floor area ratio, I'm just going to call it FAR if that's all right, for single-family dwellings only, was .27. For two-family dwellings only, it was .33. So these numbers are presented to the Planning Board, and with the Planning Department recommendation and discussion, decided to take the middle number between .27 and .33, the median, if you will, of .30, and decided that that was what they were going to recommend as the maximum floor area ratio for new duplexes in Shrewsbury. Now, being a planner, I like some flexibility in my planning and zoning, so I recommended, and they agreed and also recommended, the Planning Board, that there would be language in there that with a special permit approval, you could increase that floor area ratio by 10% up to .33, which would be the average. Now, keep in mind also, that .33 average is including those massive duplexes we've seen in the last five to 10 years, so that number's going to be a little bit bigger anyways. So the Boers erring on the side of caution, and they believe that the .30 was the best way to go with that special permit flexibility of 10%. And that's pretty much the gist of it. So are there any questions or comments?
Questions or comments with respect to Article 27? Ms. Hollenback?
So I understand this, I think. So once these buildings are built, are they then prohibited from adding any additions on there? And would a deck be considered gross whatever foot, whatever?
Good question. No, they would not be allowed to expand past that floor area ratio for a duplex. For a deck, though, that is a good question about the deck. Gross floor area, anything that's not surrounded by four walls, anything that's open space, decks, patios, those types of things, don't count towards that calculation. Garages, basements, attics, living rooms, bedrooms, all that would count, but anything that's open to the outside elements doesn't count towards that total. That's a good question.
Mr. Pitney, Finance Committee Recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends Article 27.
Further questions or comments? Further questions or comments? Mr. Lukach.
John Lukach, Precinct 2. Shrewsbury has some of the least restrictive residential zoning bylaws in the state, if not the weakest. We also have the most, the minimum, our minimum lot sizes are among the smallest in the state. We have various loopholes in our zoning bylaws. This is an example of what I consider to be a loophole, the same is true of Article 28. It designed to eliminate or reduce the loopholes, and these are long overdue, and there are probably many more of these types of loopholes that need to be addressed in our zoning bylaws. So I would strongly encourage people to vote for these. They are long overdue. Thank you.
Further questions, comments? Mr. Rotigliano.
Chris Rotigliano, Precinct 7. The gross floor area, if it's a duplex, does that include both floors? I'm sorry, if it's a two-floor duplex, would that include both floors as the total gross area?
Yes.
Or is it just the footprint?
It is not the footprint. It's not the square footage. When we're talking about gross floor area, we're talking about the volume. So we're talking, yeah, the first thing you said, both floors.
Thank you.
Yep.
Further questions or comments on Article 27? Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a two-thirds vote to pass, since it involves an amendment to the zoning bylaw, we'll try a voice vote first, according to our bylaw. If I'm in doubt as to the sufficiency of the vote, we'll have a standing vote. All those in favor of the printed motion under Article 27, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no? And the motion carries unanimously and by a two-thirds vote. Article 28. Mr. DiPaolo.
I move, excuse me, I move the substitute motion for Article 28.
Second.
Identified as the green sheet on your handout.
Second.
Okay, the substituted motion under Article 28 has been moved and seconded that the town amend the zoning bylaw in Section 7B relating to area, frontage, yard, and lot coverage requirements, as described in the green sheet, which is in the packet of your substituted motions. Town Planner Bernard Cahill.
Thank you. I'm gonna be putting up a PowerPoint in just a second, so we'll give the stage in just a second.
In the meantime, then, I'll ask Mr. Pitney for the Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee is gonna hold the recommendation until after Mr. Cahill's presentation.
Thanks.
Okay.
All right. All right.
Go ahead, Mr. Cahill.
Okay, so this is Article 28. I'm sure you're very excited about it. It's zoning and math. I tried to explain this to my family last night at dinnertime, and I had a very confused seven and 11-year-old. It didn't help, I was using peas and mashed potatoes instead of a PowerPoint. That's okay. Anyways, so, as you can see up here and as my words state pretty clearly, is in the last few years, planning board and engineering, planning department, planning board and engineering department, have seen a lot more extremely irregularly shaped lots like this one. I'll try to press the right button. Here we go. All right, there usually tend to be three main reasons why these types of unusual or highly irregular lots get made, right? To circumvent zoning requirements, to meet minimum lot area requirements, when it's not otherwise obvious where they can get that area from, when they're not contiguous and together. Third, to maximize or to squeeze the most lots out of usually what it is, is a single-family lot with a big portion of land wants to get as many other lots as they can out of it, dividing it up, sort of maximize their gain. This leads to some negative consequences of what these irregular-shaped lots can do. It undermines the ability of the town to regulate density and enforce zoning, two things that since 1967, this town has voted on continuously to get to the point where we're at in terms of density and zoning enforcement, creates unusable portions of lot, excuse me, and creates the potential for future conflict between residents, which may or may not have a legal element to it. All right, so on the right-hand side, I'm gonna go through some of these consequences real quick for everyone. Tell me, I'm gonna just keep shouting. So what we have over here on the right-hand side is what's called a rat tail in planning parlance. And when we talk about trying to circumvent zoning requirements, last year, this town meeting also, one of the articles that was approved by this town meeting was that anytime you create more than three rear lots in a row, even if those rear lots aren't your own, you have to come for a special permit. Well, this guy said, "I don't wanna come for that special permit. I'm gonna run this five-foot-wide rat tail, which is several hundred feet long, all the way down here, just so this lot three doesn't touch one and twos to avoid a special permit." I guess we're pretty scary people on the planning board, so definitely to avoid that, right? It's obviously very unusable by the owner, who lives way down there, and of course, there's gonna be a potential for a legal dispute with the person who eventually owns rear lot number two, if not just harsh words. The other side, you see what's called an hourglass shape. I think it's pretty obvious why it's called an hourglass shape, and these you see throughout town. And what this is trying to do is, you see the lower house there, that, if you cut it off right there at the skinny part, the neck, that wouldn't have enough lot area to meet the minimum lot area requirement, so that house couldn't be there. So run this little spite strip up, stick it in the back here, and now you've got the minimum lot area requirement, which undermines the density, of course, because now you're squeezing in more houses that I don't think this was really the intent of the density bylaws when they were passed in the last 40 years. And again, you see this also avoiding this rear lot here, three rear lots in a row. And future disputes are definitely coming on this one. So the planning board recommended a lot-shaped formula as a tool to prevent these types of extreme dimensions in lots. Now, to calculate it, similar to the floor area ratio, kind of similar, you take the lot size, so if it's a 20,000-square-foot lot, you take that 20,000-square-feet, you multiply it by 16, then you add up all the perimeter, you multiply it by itself, you square it, and you just divide one number by the other. All right, hope everyone's still with me on that. And as you'll see, as we move along, the closer we get to the lot-shaped factor of being 1.0, the closer essentially, and you'll see this, you get to being a square, something in proportion from the lot size to the perimeter. So here's an example of that. I just made this up, this isn't a lot. In the example below, right, the lot-shaped factor would have a .98 lot-shaped factor. So you take 50,000, this square was 50,000 square feet of land, and you had a 900 linear foot of perimeter, you'd take that 50,000, multiply it by 16, divide it by 900 times itself first, and you get .98, and you can see it's almost a perfect square, pretty good. So what towns do typically is they set their lot-shaped factor based on zero to one, and the further away from, the closer to zero you get, the more irregular-shaped lots you get. If you added one of those rat tails off the side of here somewhere like that, five feet wide, that number's gonna drop dramatically, because you're increasing the perimeter number without increasing your lot area number. So that starts to change drastically, and you'll see that as we go along. So when we input a heck of a lot more numbers in the last few months, through this lot-shaped factor, planning department discovered that all but the most extreme irregular lots either were better than .45, either met or were better than .45. So unlike floor area ratio, where you want a golf score, the lower the better, and this one, you want basketball, you want a bigger number, right? That's what you're looking for here. There is one caveat I would note before I get into some examples, is that rear lots, also called estate lots or flag lots or what have you, we would, in this, at least by the wording we have here, the access strip to the main road wouldn't count, because that's kind of in the nature of what a rear lot and an estate lot is. They're not necessarily unusual portions, and we also have guidelines guiding those dimensions anyways of an access strip. I'm gonna show you right here. This little green area in the corner down here, that's the access strip, it has to be 50 feet wide, and anything longer than 300 feet already needs a special permit. So you can see up here, this with the access strip counted as .32. So if we set it, which the planning board recommends, at .45, this would be below it, and it wouldn't be a buildable lot, it would be nonconforming. Take that access strip away, and it's .83, because this is a pretty good rectangle, and there's nothing unusual really about that or irregular. Now here, this one, great example, because even if you eliminate this area here, so with it, it's .18, right? So well below the .45 threshold, even if you get rid of it, it's .24, because it has this nice long strip here. Which, again, adding perimeter, not adding land area. So anytime you get these tiny strips, it really blows it out of the park. So again, the planning board's recommendations, as you can see before you, is to have a .45 lot-shaped factor. This one is .13, so as irregular as you can probably get. Well, we could add a few more rat tails and get it down low, I'm sure, but for right now, this is what you can get on this one. So I just wanna, we wanna keep using that one, because you've already seen it. This one, kind of the spider, I call it, .28. It is getting a little bigger, because you're getting more area with it, even though you do have more perimeter. And as you can see, as the number gets bigger, you'll see the lot start to take shape here. I call this the little dipper, because, well, it looks like a little dipper. .37, in this case, this wouldn't be buildable without this, because it's 20,001 square feet. It's over by two square feet. It's, this lot right now, it needed to be 20,000 square feet, it got to 20,001 by adding the little dipper up here around this house and keeping this house. .40, looks kind of like a bench, but again, this one's really long, the perimeter, this is a little deceptive, this is actually like 500 feet on each side, and there's like 800 or something. .40, so again, we're approaching the .45 here. Here's .43, this is the corn cob pipe. You can see, again, the long stem on this side, smoke coming out here. So yeah, again, you can see the long thing. Now, we crossed the .45 threshold, and you can immediately see it starts to change. Those really small strips disappear, you have a large space here, right? It's big, but again, if you cut it off here, it'd be pretty even. The sideways lava lamp, .53, so we're getting bigger, right? It's zoning, I gotta have fun, come on. All right, .59, and I think what also, as we move on here, what you're seeing is that we're being restrictive, but the idea isn't to say everything has to be a perfect square. That's not realistic, it's not what we want, it's not what we're going for. There's plenty within this maneuverability to have some flexibility in how you draw your lots, right? And you can see .75, it gets more and more close to a square, .84, and this has to be the squarest lot in town, it's .98. So again, the planning board recommended a lot-shaped factor of .45, and now I'm talking loud into a mic, and that's kind of where we're at with that. I'll take questions.
Is there gonna be a quiz on the names of all those lots?
Yeah, they're planning board, they're actually planning definitions, yeah.
Think I like the lava lamp best. To Article 28. Mr. Lukach.
John Lukach, Precinct 2. Mr. Cahill, are these examples of plots that were, have already gone through, that they are either, they're built, or they have already gotten plot plans so that they can be built according to what you're seeing there? And so they, the new, this new bylaw would not apply to them, or is these examples you were just showing hypothetically?
So because, so, I'll answer one question at a time. The first question is, is all these lots have been approved in the last few years? So these are called approval-not-requiered plans, which means they don't have to go to the planning board for approval. They're not subdivision plans, it's when you divide up a lot or any piece of land. To approve them, now, just because they've been approved doesn't mean they meet all other aspects of zoning.
Sure.
In terms of land area or others, there are minimum requirements with, Jeff Allen can tell you about, because he signs off on them with us, is that it needs to meet frontage requirements, and I believe, and access, and then square footage requirements, not square footage, what's the other one? Access and frontage.
Okay.
So really, that's it. So, but most of those do meet every other zoning requirement, so they can be built on, and they would be protected going forward, because they've already been built.
Right. So we already have a number of examples of really oddball, you know, configurations of land that was never designed, the original zoning bylaws were not, how should I say it? It was never considered that these kinds of configurations would come before the planning board when we put the zoning regulations together, that's a fair assumption, isn't it, these pigtails and whatever you call them?
That, no, that's correct. Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. All right, so do you have any idea how many, how many current properties in town would be affected by this, by this particular bylaw change?
I don't, because it would only affect new residential lots. It wouldn't impact existing residential lots.
Okay, so.
Mr. Lukach.
I'm sorry.
How many, one more follow-up question, please.
One more, one more. So, so in other words, it would be dependent upon how a developer subdivides a particular parcel of land?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments with respect to Article 28? I will mention, by the way, for the record, that I've received a copy of a letter to the town clerk from Mr. Cahill on behalf of the Shrewsbury Planning Board, stating that on April 4th and May 2nd, 2019, the planning board held public hearings regarding Article 28, and that as, at the conclusion of those hearings, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend that article, the approval of Article 28 as written, as it relates to the amendment of the lot, minimum lot shape factor under Section 7B of the zoning bylaw. Planning, Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Pitney.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends Article 28 unanimously.
Okay, are there further questions or comments with respect to Article 28? There being none, and this motion requiring a two-thirds vote to pass, said it, since it concerns a change to the zoning bylaw, we'll try a voice vote first, according to our town bylaw, and all those in favor of the substituted motion under Article 28, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no? And the motion passes unanimously and by a two-thirds margin. Folks, we've, we are at 10:42 or 10:43. We have two choices right now. We can, I'll entertain either a motion, or should I say, is there a motion to suspend our procedural rule adopted at the beginning of the meeting on Monday night and continue on to the, to try to finish our articles tonight? Or is, or is, if not, is there such a motion, by the way? Okay, there's a motion to suspend our procedural rule and continue the discussion, beginning with Article 29? Is that motion seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, is there, the other option, by the way, is to have a motion to adjourn, to take up the meeting again tomorrow night. But the motion on the floor right now is a motion to suspend our procedural rule and continue to discuss the warrant until such time as there's a motion to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion to suspend our procedural rule, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no?
Aye.
Okay, and the motion passes. We'll continue with Article 29.
I move the printed motion under Article 29.
Second.
The printed motion under Article 29 has been moved and seconded that the town zoning bylaw be amended in Section 2, Definitions, and Section 6, Table 1, relative to continuing care of retirement communities, as described in the motion, which is printed on pages 71 and 72 of the main Finance Committee booklet. Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee does not recommend Article 29.
And Mr. DiPaolo, you're gonna speak with respect to Article 29?
The Board of Selectmen is recommending that this article be defeated. The developer, well, the lawyer for the developer, who asked to bring this forward, asked that it be withdrawn, and we can't do that, so we're asking you to vote it down.
Further questions or comments with respect to Article 29? There being none, and. There being none, and, oh, I'm sorry, we have a, I do have a planning board letter here, which I failed to read. Okay, I have a copy of a plan, of a letter to the town clerk from Mr. Cahill, the town planner, on behalf of the Shrewsbury Planning Board, stating that on April 4th and May 2nd, 2019, the planning board held public hearings regarding Article 29, and at the close of the hearing, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend defeat of Article 29. This motion requiring a two-thirds vote to pass, we'll try a voice vote first. All those in favor of the printed motion under Article 29, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. And the motion is defeated unanimously. Article 30. Mr. DiPaolo?
I move the motion under Article 30.
Second.
Printed motion under Article 30 has been moved and seconded, that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to file a petition with the General Court pursuant to Article 89 of the, of the Massachusetts Constitution, the Home Rule Amendment, and to provide that, to enact, an act relative to affordable housing in the town of Shrewsbury, as described in, on pages 72 and 73 of the booklet. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article 30.
And questions or comments with respect to Article 30, Mrs., Mr. LeBeau?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, I have asked the Board of Selectmen to put this article on, and it's been on several times before. It has not received positive action by the General Court. I do think, and the board agrees, I believe, by putting it on the warrant, that it is a question that we want to keep asking the General Court to consider. I think to the common person, I don't think anyone would not think that manufactured housing is not, should not be thought of as affordable housing. However, a majority of the General Court, not including our state representative, who I believe agrees with this position, believes that manufactured housing, similar to trailers is the more common phrase, but manufactured housing is the preferred phrase, should be considered as affordable. And we have manufactured housing down on Route 20 in Edgemere, that for purposes of Chapter 40B, is not included in our count to get to 10%. Granted, it's only 48 units of housing, and we're only at 6.37% now, but I wouldn't want to be at 9.9%. And the reason we didn't hit our 10% was because we were short some, some component of these 48 houses. So we are asking the town meeting to approve this article, which will allow us to petition the General Court to once again take this matter under consideration. So we would ask for your support of the article.
Further questions or comments with respect to Article 30? No hands in the, Mr. Scott?
Steve Scott, Precinct 9. Just a point of clarification, the explanation at the end of this article, it mentions 887 So is that incorrect?
Mr. LeBeau?
Yeah, we, we do have 887 units in the community that satisfy the definition of affordable housing. They are not, any of them manufactured housing. Manufactured housing is not included.
Further questions or comments, Mr. Schwab?
Paul Schwab, Precinct 1. I'm curious, this will affect 48 potential homeowners. I'm curious if there's been any reach out to those folks, and what their opinion was of that, and how this may actually impact the value of their homes. Also, I didn't notice anything about this in the housing production plan. I'm curious if this came from that, in that planning, or if it came as a result after that. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. LeBeau?
If anyone disagrees with me, please make it known, but this has no effect on the homeowner. And as far as where this, the genesis of this is, I noted several years ago that another community, which honestly, I can't even remember anymore, filed similar legislation, and I thought it was, I thought it made sense. I mean, to say that manufact, I, I'd submit that saying manufactured housing is not affordable is similar to legislating that the sky is not blue.
Further questions or comments, Mrs. Eslanian? What do you, I'm sorry, a follow-up, Mr. Schwab? Can Mr. Schwab have a mic?
Thank you, my apologies. Paul Schwab, Precinct 1. I was hoping, again, if you may, in response to the second part of my question, thank you, the housing-
Forgive me, I, Mr. Moderator-
Mr. LeBeau?
I mean, honestly, I can't, I can't address the plan. I, I, I'm guessing that the, I shouldn't guess. Would someone else be able to respond to the question?
Mrs. Les?
Thank you. Kristin Les, Assistant Town Manager. I, I do not have the plan in front of me, but I can assure you that we do discuss that manufactured housing and other types of housing should be reviewed to count towards our 40B subsidized housing inventory.
Further questions or comments, Mrs. Eslanian?
Gail Eslanian, Precinct 1. Could somebody clarify for me what the definition of affordable housing? Is there a monetary threshold that you have to meet?
Mrs. Les?
Thank you. The regulation is 80% of median area income for the Worcester area. So the housing costs would have to be 80% or less of Worcester area median area income. I do not have the numbers in front of me at this time.
That's what I was going to ask you. A follow-up?
Follow-up? Go ahead.
Well, I think to Mr. Schwab's question, and perhaps the, the question would be, would those homeowners feel as though their property either met that threshold, or for some reason maybe put them in a situation that, you know, put them in a, a lower class of, of housing that, that may be detrimental to them?
Mrs. Les?
The mobile home park is a leased aspect, so people rent their lots and place their homes in that area. So again, as Mr. LeBeau stated, there would be no restrictions.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments regarding Article 31? 30, I'm sorry. Mrs. McSweeney?
Kathy McSweeney, Precinct 8. I have been struggling with this one for, since the packet came in the mail, and I honestly can't tell you why I have issues with it. It just doesn't sit right. And I think overall, aren't we trying to actually provide affordable housing to people rather than trying to find a trick in order to get to our, our percentage that we're supposed to meet based on the Commonwealth?
Mr. LeBeau?
Well, I guess we, we differ on what we think a trick is. I think, I think to, first of all, we have 887 units already in town, and yes, we do have a plan that when, and, and I would certainly defer to Assistant Town Manager Les, that when certain subdivisions are, are built, there's a requirement now for affordable units to either be put in, or funds to be paid to our Affordable Housing Trust. I think it's just a, a, a realization, an acknowledgement of reality, that these homes are affordable, and for a legislative effort to exclude them, I, I, I wonder what the thinking was of that, truthfully. It, it seems that, well, there are political, like many things, there are political reasons why certain decisions are made and certain votes are taken. So, I, I mean, I don't think this is a trick. I think this is a correction to, to true out the matter, that these are affordable housing units, and to exclude them because they're manufactured housing. I, I wonder about the propriety of that.
Do you have a follow-up, Mrs. McSweeney?
I do, because I think if this was, I, I guess my question-
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. LeBeau?
They are. We are not the only one, I don't know about this legislative session, but we're not the only community that files this type of legislation.
Mrs. Kane?
There are actually many communities who have filed similar Home Law petitions with this exact same purpose, and it has been a point of discussion at the Housing Committee, relative to any of the major housing bills that are going through. And I would expect that if we do see a housing bill this year, you will see efforts to have this language included, to affect the overall state, not just one community at a time.
Further questions or comments on Article 30? Ms. Hollenbach?
So this is basic, I'm sorry, Melissa Hollenbach, Precinct 9. So this is basically addressed at the current mobile home, trailer park, and Edgemere, the area? And would this be impacting, let's say, if we had one of these, you know, nice lovely lots that we have, if someone wants to put what is determined as manufactured housing, which could be 4,000 square feet and run 450, you know, you know, half a million dollars for manufactured homes? Is there a definition that we're using for mobile homes? And also, in the, the area that we're talking about, if someone wanted to remove their current trailer, so to speak, and put in one of the new lovely double wides? You know, I guess there's, there's some questions that I have.
Mrs. Les?
The property at Edgemere is a grandfathered use. We do not allow manufactured homes in any other districts at this time, so that would not be permitted.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Icardi, you all set? Yes, sir.
James Slaves, Precinct 2. Can you explain what happens when we have less than this 10% of how that affects building in our town?
Mrs. Les?
Through, uh, Chapter 40B, through the state law, if we do not meet the 10% affordable housing, we are subject to what's called a comprehensive permit development. A developer could come in and propose for sale or for rent units on any parcel of land in the town of Shrewsbury, regardless of what the zoning district is, and does not need to meet the dimensional or, or other criteria within the zoning bylaw. It's a review under the Zoning Board of Appeals. Our most recent 40B project that was reviewed and approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals was the Point at Hills Farm near the Stony Hill neighborhood. So we are subject to developments that are not within the local control before we get to that 10%.
Further questions or comments regarding Article 30? Okay, there being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 30, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. And the motion passes. Article 31, Mr. DiPaolo?
I move the printed motion under Article 31.
Second.
Printed motion under Article 31 has been moved and seconded, that the town transfer $100,000 from free cash for counseling and educational services to families. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee unanimously recommends Article 31.
And questions or comments with respect to Article 31? There being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 31, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. And the motion passes unanimously. Article 32, Mr. DiPaolo?
I move the printed motion under Article 32.
Second.
Motion, printed motion under Article 32 has been moved and seconded, that the town transfer $20,000 from free cash to pay, to the Lake Quinsigamond Commission to fund expenses associated with the management of Lake Quinsigamond. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article 32.
Questions or comments with respect to Article 32? There being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 32, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. And the motion passes unanimously. Article 33.
I move the printed motion under Article 33.
Second.
The printed motion under Article 33 has been moved and seconded, that the town transfer $750,000 from free cash to the general stabilization account, as described on page 74 of the booklet. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article 33.
And questions or comments with respect to Article 33? There being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 33, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. And the motion passes unanimously. Article 34, Mr. DiPaolo?
I move the printed art, the printed motion under Article 34.
Second.
The printed motion under Article 34 has been moved and seconded, that the town set the fiscal 2020 spending limits for the following revolving accounts. The Council on Aging Transportation Fund, $75,000, and the Donahue Rowing Center Fund, Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article 34.
Questions or comments with respect to Article 34? There being, oh, yes, ma'am.
Lynn Roy, Precinct 1. So my question is, is this just for 2020, and, and why a limit, in particular, on the Council of Aging Transportation Fund?
Mr. Mizikar?
Yes, yes. It is just for one single fiscal year. That's all we're allowed to set it by under the general law, and we do have to set a spending limit under the general laws.
Follow-up?
Yeah, what was, what was last year's maximum spending for the transportation?
The same.
Further questions or comments with respect to Article 34? Okay, this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 34, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. And the motion passes unanimously. Article 35, Mr. DiPaolo?
I move the printed motion under Article 35.
Second.
The printed motion under Article 35 has been moved and seconded, that the town accept the sum of $800,000 from the municipal, municipal light department, CATV Division, in lieu of taxes, and appropriate that sum to the Board of Assessors for their use in fixing the tax rate for fiscal year 2020. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Pitney?
The Finance Committee recommends Article 35.
And are there any questions or comments with respect to Article 35? There being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 35, please signify by saying aye? All those opposed, please signify by saying no. The motion passes unanimously. Article 36?
I move the printed motion under Article 36.
Second.
The printed motion under Article 36 has been moved and seconded, that the town accept the sum of $237,569 from the municipal light department in lieu of taxes, and appropriate that sum to the use of the Board of Assessors in fixing the tax rate for fiscal 2020. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article 36.
And are there any questions or comments with respect to Article 36? There being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 36, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. And the- And the motion passes unanimously. Article 37?
I move the printed motion under Article 37.
Second.
The printed motion under Article 37 has been moved and seconded, that the town transfer the sum of $500,000 from free cash, and appropriate that sum to the use of the Board of Assessors in fixing the tax rate for fiscal 2020. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends Article 37.
And are there any questions or comments with respect to Article 37? Mrs. Icardi? Not so fast, folks.
I'm sorry, Mary Icardi, Precinct 5. I just wanted to ask a question about utilizing free cash. I noticed it in Article 2, $419,000 and $500,000 here. Is this for our operating expenses? And does the board have a policy on using free cash, not for capital and one-time expenditures?
Response, Mr. Mizikar?
Yeah, so fixing the tax rate is a special provision that's given to us under the general laws, so it's raised separately whenever we set the tax rate. So it's not directed toward any expenditure, although without the appropriation of it here, the books aren't balanced yet, so in some ways, you could consider it going towards operations. The board does have a policy that is revised going into this budget process regarding the use of free cash, and the attempt would be to use no money in the operating budget, so no money in Article 11, but setting the tax rate or lowering the tax rate is not looked upon negatively, so while using it in the operating fund by bond rating agencies, they kind of look at that with a close eye, but an article like this has, has no impact on us in that manner, so.
Further questions or comments regarding Article 37? There being none, and this motion requiring a majority vote to pass, would all those in favor of the printed motion under Article 37, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. And the motion passes unanimously. This concludes our actions on the 2019 Annual Town Meeting. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I'd like to express my thanks to all town meeting members for your attention, for your thoughtful comments, and for your dedication to our town. Thanks also to the people here on stage with me for their leadership and assistance during this meeting and throughout the year. And also, again, thanks to the folks at Shrewsbury Media Connection and everybody watching from home for your interest in our town meeting form of government. Folks, please take a look around your seats for any personal articles or trash, and take them with you. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All those in favor? Okay, thank you all. The motion, the meeting is adjourned. Good night.